Great. You're good.
Okay. Welcome to tonight's meeting of May 16, 2022. It is a study session and we'll go around and ask any reports from councilors if you have anything that's happened. Councilor Zadi? Oh. Councilor DeMello? And for Mike? Councilor Emmons? Councilor Seymour?
Just quick fill-ins from this last week. Monday was, or Tuesday was the Chamber of Government Affairs Committee. And myself and Councilor Emmons were on that and gave an update. A great deal with that chamber has at that time here, as many other meetings during the week, had to do with closing sessions of the legislature. Same was true on Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation. That was on Wednesdays. They'd completed their combination with West Metro Chamber and Leadership Jeffco. And so a lot of that had to do with the budgeting part of it. And they are in the black and engaging investors at an outstanding pace. Ended the Parks Rec Library and Open Space Board on Thursday evening. They're working on, they got a great update from Director Mr. Herrera. They approved some grants and sent some grant applications back to associations for some updates. They were finalizing edits in their bylaws that they'd been working on at the city attorney's office. And they are prepared and ready to move forward with strategic plan alignment. And they know they're ready to go in the June onboarding. Along with most of my, many of my colleagues at the Police Week Ceremony. Always a very solemn occasion, great opportunity to participate in that. And on Tuesday, the Growing Home What's Cooking wrap-up. I won't mention who took the celebrity category, but it was fantastic omelet. Go online. Perfect omelet. So that was enough from my week.
I had, a lot of us were at the Spring Fling on Saturday. Fantastic, fantastic community gathering. I haven't had time to write up different things to you, City Manager Andrews. Different things, I know Councilor Emmons wrote a couple of things that we heard. But 98% of our talks were how wonderful it was to have community together. Have everybody down there met so many young people that are moving into that area. And the excitement of being down there and the ideas that they had flowing. And this person was talking to me, this person was listening and they ended up, I got out of the way because they were collaborating with things down there. It just, I can't tell you what a beautiful day it was. And Tomas came down and you would have thought you handed everybody a million dollars because he took the time to come and have lemonade at Creative Corner. He took time to talk to people at the booths and his presence was just really appreciated. So City Manager, it was a success. It was great. And also I had breakfast with RTB directors on Friday. And they're getting ready for the No Fair Month in August. And I did share about our concern because they don't have the police presence to help with whatever might happen that month. And so we talked about that. I also, because I mentioned the week before that, that at our Northwest MCC meeting, that Broomfield is very concerned about the 128 line. And that it's being discontinued and that also gets into some of our lines. So we talked to them directly, they hadn't heard about it. So they will work from their end to see what they can do.
I was gonna quickly thank Councilor Zadi for going to Inclusivity Board. As some of you know, on Wednesday nights in the spring, I place a fallout on fields, which my, my thanks to Tomas and his crew because the fields were great as always. But I was hoping that, did you, if there was an update for my Inclusivity Board sometime?
Yeah, so I have a very detailed update that I left at home. So on Monday, I will report out on Monday. But yeah, it was basically a great presentation on what they're doing. Their foods, their food subcommittee, they get a presentation from Going Home as to this amazing program that they're coordinating to figure out a solution, a community-based solution to their food shortage and many other things. But I want to just, I'll report back on Monday.
Well, I appreciate you going in.
Okay. Counselor, or Counselor Andrews. City Manager Andrews, I demote you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think given the fullness of tonight's agenda, I won't offer any formal comments except to remind people that we're starting with the VIDA agenda tonight. Westminster Economic Development Authority. And we have one item on that agenda for this evening. And that is review of our downtown and the progress and the way we've structured ourselves there. So up to you, but that's my own intro. Excellent. Turn it over to Lindsay Kimball, our Director of Economic Development, to introduce the team and jump right in.
Great. Thank you, Joanie. And thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and councilors for having us here tonight. I'm Lindsay Kimball, your Director of Economic Development. Tonight, we're pleased to provide you with an update on Downtown Westminster Project, which has experienced some amazing progress even throughout the COVID pandemic and all of the uncertainty that that brought to the commercial real estate market. I think it's really a testament to the market-driven demand for products like this, that we still were able to be successful. And we're going to tell you more about that. We feel we're really catching our stride and especially as we move past all of this uncertainty. And so I wanted to share with you, we have several people here that have helped us throughout the years to make this possible. The first to my left is John Burke, Construction Manager for Downtown and Downtown Manager. We have Greg Stoffel, who's our retail consultant. We have Mr. Malcolm Murray here tonight, who has been our legal advisor. And on the phone, I'm so sorry. And we have Mona, of course, wonderful Mona is back there. And Bob Byerhoff from our team in finance that helps us out tremendously. Also, you can't see them, but we have online Mary Bev Jenkins, who is our retail consultant, as well as John Mullins, who also works with Bob very closely and Larry on those financial projections for the downtown. Next slide, please. All right. And also I just want to add, because I know that it's been a while since we've been able to have this whole downtown team assembled. And as each person comes up to speak on their particular topics, they will also provide you with a very, very brief bio so you know more about them and their company and what they do. Well, let's get started. We have a really full agenda tonight. We are going to endeavor to cover the many aspects of Downtown Westminster development, including taking you with a step back in time to, we'll go back in time in the time machine to the late 1990s to understand, I always think it's important to understand the context of what we're doing and to know where we've come from, to know where we're going. So we will go through a brief history of how we got to where we are today and understand the context for which those decisions were made in, in the early aughts and in the late 1990s. Also, a history of how we purchased a site and invested it to receive and promote private sector investments that we are seeing today. Also walk through the financial modeling. And we will talk about the establishment of the GID and its uses. And finally, we'll talk about why, from a commercial real estate perspective, this site is so attractive. There's a lot of things that remain through time. Obviously, the mall was cited there for a reason, great access, great infrastructure, strong demand, great community. So there's also, it's still attractive today. The location is still very, very relevant and important. And also, we're going to talk about, from a real estate perspective, how national trends and consumer trends are impacting how we develop and shaping that. Next slide, please. So the decline of the American Mall, this is where we're going to step in our time machine. And we're going to go back to, let's say, 1995. That was a good year. The mall was where everybody used to congregate. I remember from grandmothers to goth kids to everybody. The mall was our central hangout place in the late 90s, 90s and the 80s. The mall was probably where you might have had your first dates and shared the Orange Julius in the Westminster Mall. Tried to decipher some Magic Eye poster that was popular. And probably while, you know, Lance Morrissey or Garth Brooks was wafting out at the Camelot Music, where they still sold records. You made a day of going to the mall. That was how the social trends and consumer trends were at that time. You had a whole place where you could be enclosed and spend the entire day having a great time. But you also have to keep your eye on the clock because remember, we were also in time pre-sold homes. So what happened? Why did the market fail? There's several reasons for a market failure, which impacted all American malls. These enclosed style malls built in the 70s, 60s, 80s, that impacted their decline. There was missing market opportunities. There were lots of negative realities that we'll talk about. And also inefficiencies in the way that these shopping centers were doing business, this model, as opposed to where consumer trends were going. So America as a whole was over-retailed. Everybody wanted to have one of these malls, but not everyone could support them all. So we were over-built. There was the rise of online shopping. Also, remember in the early 2000s, early aughts, there were the dot-com recession that we suffered that made, helped consumer spending take a hit. People looked closer at how they were shopping and what they were paying. We also locally had the effect of the Flatiron Mall, which came online. That was the shiny new penny that really took a lot of the consumer demand away from this mall and hurt it even more. Also, those consumer preferences. So think about when you started to shop online. When you stopped really saying, ah, do I really have to go to the mall, get dressed, drive to the mall? No, I can just do it on my computer now. So there were those trends. And there was the fact that we were changing to a model of open-air experiential retail, where you could make maybe a shorter trip, do have an experience, maybe get some food and drink and so forth, and buy a specialized good. And then finally, you know, we had the Great Recession, which, which hurt a lot of retailers. And I'd say if there still were malls like this operating across the United States, the final death blow was COVID, where nobody really wanted to be in a closed space. So as sales declined, it hit the anchors first. Those are some of the higher-priced, higher-end anchors, Macy's, Nordstrom's, Dillard's, those sorts of things. Those anchors, just by their name, they're anchoring the mall. So as they start to decline, that cancer spreads throughout the mall. And we began to lose those middle-sector retailers. So they were losing out because the traffic wasn't being driven by those anchors any longer. So they started to decline. So across the country, we had these giant gray, million-square-foot blights. And besides the loss of revenue to the cities, it was impacting surrounding property values. And on a less tangible level, the image of the community. It left a hole in the social fabric. And you know, you see something that's tired and neglected and sort of, just kind of there is a big gray mass. It's sad, it's tired, and it's in need of a refresh. Next slide, please. So we come to this point where it was not just in Westminster, but across the country, redevelopment choices. We wanted to illustrate the spectrum of these choices. So the first one there in the top-left corner is do nothing, right? So even though you're not going to decide, that's still a choice. To do nothing is still a choice. And you can see from the spectrum from left to right, try to illustrate some of those choices. So do nothing is let it go into bankruptcy, let it shutter, have a blight, don't do anything. The next sort of step on this continuum is the adaptive reuse. So there's also a spectrum there. There's some folks turned their malls into flea markets and that became their new identity. Or, you know, it was a low-cost something or other seasonal store. There also were people who did a little better job. So as you move through the spectrum, those other pictures are a very successful office park. They converted a mall into office space, that was also a common solution. Still, it's not Class A office space, it's probably Class C, which is a lower, lower level, lower rents. And from the outside, you know, you can put lipstick on it, but it's, you still know that was an old mall that failed. Moving along the continuum, some folks, like Flatiron now, is doing a partial demo, partial demolition, trying to rebuild and maybe some of those seas of asphalt parking. Do adding some, they, in their case, are adding some housing to the area. That's one way, but you know, there's not a lot of control there. And it's also not solving the heart of the matter, which is the fact you still have a mall structure there with stores that are struggling and starting to struggle more. Final option is the most bold, the most proactive, the biggest thinking. It's a fresh start. So in communities throughout the country where we've seen them be the most successful in this type of redevelopment, it has been with that fresh start. When there's a severe market failures, like we've seen with the former model of the American Mall, those who made the smartest and boldest choice, which is to gain the property control, control the ownership of the site and move it forward with a vision that the community says that they would like to see, that they would like to see invested in, those are some of the most successful in the country. And that's what Westminster did. You know, with this bold thinking. You know, with this bold thinking, we also know that we have a vested interest. So the community has a vested interest. And that's very different from if the city did not control the property. And that's why that's so important. That we are here to fulfill a vision for the city, for the downtown area. And whereas a private sector developer, you know, they're not as patient, the money's not as patient, the capital's not as patient. There's not a truly vested interest greater than the return on capital. So you would see things being done that maybe are done for expediency, that are done to, sometimes we'll say they'll pump up the property and they'll dump it. We didn't want to see that in Westminster. So we took control of our own destiny and are controlling and acting in the role of master developer. We did, I do want to note before I go ahead, John, we did try, I know several times throughout probably last decade to work with a master developer. There are about four of them. Some of you all may remember those, those starts and stops. The issue there was again about control in that with that, you're, you're trading control and control of the vision, control of what product is produced there. When you, when you cede that to a master developer. And we also, from what I understand from folks, that there was a problem with divisional alignment and true long-term commitment, which is what you need in a project like this. So this organic block by block approach that you are taking is one of the smartest and most boldest that one can take in this sort of development. And it is a national model. We actually have a group coming tomorrow from Palm, Palm Desert, California. Who said, yeah, this is amazing what you guys have done. We're flying out, we're flying our mayor out and, you know, our director of economic development to come see what you guys have done. And so we'll be presenting to them and giving them a tour. So just an example of some of the national recognition that you have received for this project. And now I'd like to turn it over to John Burke.
Thank you, Lindsay. So yeah, John Burke, I know most of you have been with us about 18 years. We started off Westminster Station project for a number of years and moved over to downtown Westminster about 2016. So yeah, I'm not going to, next slide, please. Cover a lot of the history. Again, the write-up is interesting, I think, from the background of why we're doing what we're doing, kind of start with the why. And the harsh reality is, you know, some of the details are up there, but the second bullet down is one that struck me. Back in 1994, Westminster Mall was generating 40% of the city's sales tax revenue. As our CFO Larry Doran can attest to, that's kind of putting all your eggs in one basket. The city needed to do something different, which they did. And I'll kind of skip a couple of bullets, but we reinvested some of those dollars into focus areas such as the Orchard Town Center, which then allowed us to have some of that revenue to go basically develop a master plan for the Westminster Mall to revitalize it. In some of those data points from 1977 to 2000, it was a regional destination. Like me around the table, I was one of those kids who used to frequent the mall. And it was, it was a community gathering place. It wasn't just a place to buy goods. It was a place to meet people, a place to congregate. Again, back Platter Mall opened up in August of 2000, and that was the beginning of the end of Westminster Mall. So after we started to develop and create some of that strategic investment in other areas, the city slowly and methodically acquired parcels of land, starting with the Trumpus Steakhouse in 2009, and then settled a majority control by 2011. And the important for that is to clean title and allow us to have conversations with master developers, like Lindsay said. We went through about four of those master developers and ultimately the investment they're going to put in wasn't significant enough to create the vibrancy of downtown. We also know that a lot of these major companies, and we've got others around the table that can talk about this as well, that have now gone out of business or they've acquired, we would not be seeing what we're seeing today in the downtown if we would have gone with a single sole sourced master developer. So the public vision process really started back after the acquisition. So in 2012, going out, dozens of meetings of Councilor Nummella, bright members as well, with the planning group that went out and did a lot of that research and said, what does the community want to see? What is this, this, you know, kind of gaping hole within our community that was on the cover of Dead Mall Magazine? We want that place that we can reinvest and call our community again. And so with that, we started to create that vision for what the downtown Westminster would look like, which then also with Bob Byerhoff and our finance teams, we issued certificates of participation in 2015 to really put our, our money where the vision was to go build that first phase of infrastructure in downtown Westminster. Next slide, please. From those visiting sessions, you'll see this information graphic was developed. They really cast the vision for what is downtown Westminster at full build-out. So on the bottom left, you'll see some of those metrics, you know, two to three million square feet of office. I think originally the graphic showed about a million square feet. As we've now advanced about five, six years into the project, we're getting some feedback from the marketplace that this could hold more. And so we're anticipating somewhere between two and three million square feet of office space. Also looking at about 4,500 residents that will call Westminster home, about 700,000 square feet of retail, which importantly is less than what the mall had. When you think about a 1.2 million square foot mall, again, Greg Stoffel will talk about the retail demand on this site, it's a different mindset than just bringing back your home goods stores inside of those, those malls. It's a very different type of retail. 300 plus hotel rooms. Again, we already have the Origin Hotel, which is an early adopter to the downtown side, 125 key boutique hotel. Entertainment District, which I think that was last week, it passed the ordinance that it enables downtown Westminster Entertainment District as well as Orchard Town Center, which is again, all about activation and bringing people gathering in the community. Lead Silver Buildings, every one of the buildings so far has been lead silver, is either certified or getting that currently, which reduces the overall energy consumption while consumption on the downtown buildings, which is important to long-term sustainability. And lastly, access to mass transit. As Lindsay was saying, real estate is all about location, right? You hear it all the time, location, location, location. This has it. It has mass transit. We have the Flatiron Flyer, RTD writing it adjacent to it, US 36, as well as the future fast tracks of commuter station across the street. Next slide, please. So just a real quick update, Lindsay said, even through the pandemic, we've got a number of projects open, you know, starting with Eaton Street Park Apartments in 2019. And truly just rolling through not only the mixed use residential, but also some of the retailers that opened up for the course of the past couple of years. And again, when you look around, other retailers were shuttering their doors while we were in position to not only get new tenants sign up with LOIs, but also go through and get open, which is just starting to get the vibrancy of downtown. I'm super excited to see all the activity this fall as we get more and more businesses open in downtown. Next slide, please. Quick updates on our first ownership residential project. So the first 34 townhomes on the left, they'll be delivered this summer to new residents in downtown. There are four additional, I should say, three additional projects. Just on the east half of that block, we'll also bring in additional townhomes as well as 20 units of condominiums. That will be the first condominiums built in the city of Westminster in well over 10 years, which is really exciting to get that type of quality of product in the downtown. Beyond that, there are another 34 townhomes up on 92nd Avenue that will probably about a year away from starting construction on that. And then lastly, some more condominiums over by the future Marsback and just adjacent to Origin Hotel. Last thing on the slide, the Westminster West Office. We've been talking about that developer and that project for a while. They are right now submitting their second round of ODP revisions and should be, they're right now planning to close by September and start construction. Leasing activity, I will just tell you, through COVID was non-existent, right? Nobody's looking to lease up new office space. That has changed. We're getting more and more calls for office tenants now, and they are actively talking to a significant office tenant that would take over 100,000 square feet of that 200,000 square foot office building. Next slide, please. One of the important elements of why build a downtown, particularly when we establish the urban renewal area over the entire downtown site. What you'll see in this graph, and again, I apologize, it's kind of hard to see the numbers there, but that, the gray bar at the bottom is all the, the TIF that we received through the urban renewal area to the city of Westminster. Because when we were able to blight that site as the mall, all that property tax now comes to the city, which is not insignificant. The gold bar is all the general improvement district revenue. That stays long-term, coming back to the city to handle many things. We'll talk more about the GID in a moment. And then the blue bar on top is the retail sales tax. This is a very modest projection of development as it is on the very left-hand side of that graph is 2022. That's where we are today. We feel very confident in those revenues that are coming in. As we, I would say slowly but methodically grow the site. So this graph shows at least every couple of years, you're coming in with newer projects, what that means to the city. A significance, you know, we're estimating what that's going to look like based upon past. This could also accelerate very quickly. And I think we're excited to talk about what the next steps are the downtown are with you tonight. Next slide, please. So the general improvement district, the reason behind setting up a general improvement district, which would be different than a metro district, is this body, the Economic Development Authority, City Council, also acts as the de facto GID board. And in so doing, can direct to keep those mill levy on that site to then maintain it so that development pays its own way. This isn't putting the burden on the existing residents. This is truly every developer, every property within the downtown pays into the general improvement district for the level maintenance on that site. So a little bit of history, the GID was established by council in August of 2015. That mill levy can go up to but not exceed 50 mills. The GID was certified in November of '22 at 35 mills. And then the current mill levy for the entire, all the districts that are in there with RTD, school districts, et cetera, is just over 111 mills. And it's important to look, when you think about developing or purchasing property anywhere in the metro area, I picked out a couple of, these are recent examples of what mill levies are in other comparable areas. So Arista is at 171 mills, Belmar at 122, almost 123, Downtown Superior, almost 170, and the Orchard Town Center at 120. And in some of those cases, those are districts established by private entities, which the city doesn't have any control over. And so they get to set those bills and there's not significant accountability to where those revenues go. The presumption is it has to go, go right back into those sites. Again, for our downtown GID, those uses could be maintenance, renewal, CIPs, et cetera, as well as police, fire, professional services. So it's a very broad reaching general improvement district. Those revenues that come in can be utilized for all those purposes. Next slide, please. And I'm going to turn it over to Greg Stoffel, then we've got Mary Beth Jenkins also joining us online. But Greg, I'll start with you.
Sure. By way of introduction, I'm Greg Stoffel with Stoffel and Associates. I've consulted on retail dining and entertainment projects for over 30 years throughout the United, on all projects throughout the United States. I, I looked at the retail strategies for master plan, communities, cities and towns. And I've looked at the potential for over 400 individual projects ranging from small little strip center with auto services ended up to the potential for regional malls. So I've had, you know, a range of experience. And I worked throughout, throughout Colorado, the United States. Originally with the city, did the original feasibility study to prove Orchard Town Center would work. At the time, there were a couple of other sites that anchors were looking at. And we, we did an analysis to prove that the site worked for retail and for the anchors. And then I assisted in providing data to help attract those anchors. I started working on downtown Westminster in 2013. And I provided retail feasibility and positioning recommendations. And also worked on the allowed uses matrix, which helps us control the flow of tenants and try to avoid unnecessary duplication early on. So strength of the site, of population levels. Let's talk about, within, within a defined primary trade area, we have well over 500, 500,000 residents. Since we looked at this in 2015, we've had almost 6% growth in the population. What's really important in terms of downtown is we now have a growing onsite resident base. And I think we've estimated approximately 1,000 residents onsite right now, which is great. Really, we need the residents and we'll need the employees to create the daytime, nighttime activity that helps draw other residents of Westminster to the site. Income levels are good. They're comparable to many centers and districts throughout Colorado. We've looked at the comparison of literally every, every significant regional district and center in Colorado. The primary, the average household income in the primary trade area is currently about 111,000. That is a 50% increase since we looked at it in 2015. So we've seen income growth in the area. And one of the metrics that we look at when we compare this site to other sites, because retailers and users are always comparing site A to other sites that they have. One of the metrics that really does well for us is the number of households earning 75,000 or more, or 100,000 or more. We compared, we, we compare very well to many centers throughout Colorado. Another factor that's going to really be important, is important and will continue to be important, is local employment. Local employment, very strong. We have over 130,000 workers within a 12-minute drive time of downtown. And that's important for restaurants. Restaurants require and need really strong employment nearby just to survive. So we have that. I think it's important to just, while I'm talking about that, just to say that one of the key attributes of Westminster is we're not, we're not pioneering. It's not an untested site. I would say at the time, Orchard Town Center, you could have called that untested, but we're not, we're not pioneering a site. The adjacent centers, adjacent to downtown, the centers, including Costco and all the centers that front, front generate over $270 million in taxable sales. So we have, we already have a strong retail district here within downtown. So we're not, you know, it's not like we're trying to create, you know, create something. So it does validate, does validate downtown as a, as a legitimate destination. We also have the map here. I pulled the map. We have, this is a heat map of Alamo, Alamo Drafthouse customer base, where customers who came to Alamo Drafthouse in March originated from. And you can look at it, you can see, this is, this is pretty much what we were hoping for and believed in is that it would draw, it would cherry pick customers from a really wide area. And we have the same heat maps for other uses in the, in the area and adjacent to it. And what we see is that the site has the ability to draw customers from a wide area. The city's vision was really ahead of the curve, as everybody, everybody's been talking about. Because it, it really is regarded now as one of the preferred solutions for addressing, you know, these, these older malls, older malls and older retail properties. We've talked about the original master developers. And I, I was interfacing with a few of them and it was obvious they didn't understand the marketer. And so if, if we had gone, if you had gone in that direction, you would end, end up with an inferior product. And we would have, be having a completely different discussion tonight, really on how to, how to correct what was done. So Lindsay talked about the changing retail environment. I won't go into detail of it. It obviously changed dramatically over the past several years and it continues to evolve in different ways. Customers are patronizing, you know, different ways. They are coming back, they are coming back and gathering, which is really a very good thing. And we can't underestimate the impact that COVID had on getting stores open and just getting people out into different centers. So to date, you know, downtown has attracted a, you know, variety of quality uses in the ground floor of office and, you know, the office and residential buildings. The initial uses that we targeted were aimed at providing amenities for early, early residents and office workers. So the mix that you see evolving early on is really aimed at, you know, amenitizing it so that additional office and residential will be attracted to the site. Specialty retailers will follow once, once the site begins to attract more leisurely visits. That's, you know, certainly in the near future. The adage, the adage retail follows rooftops is particularly relevant for downtown. Because until we had a growing base of residential, it was hard to get the interest, you know, from the retail community. And let's face it, you're at, they're at the ground floor of office and residential buildings. And, you know, the developers are more interested in getting the residential and the office built and occupied than the retailers, retail kind of follows. So we, we keep seeing a variety of quality uses continue to be attracted to downtown. And that we will continue to seed the site with unique and successful retail tenants and venues that will attract additional investment. So turn the slide, please. Change the slide. Okay. So I'm going to introduce, as an intro to Mary Beth. So where are we today? So Mary Beth Jenkins and I went over every space in the downtown block by block. And to date, not including JCPenney or Blair, we have about 160,000 square feet of retail dining and entertainment. This represents a really strong Phase One, really actually good metrics. This represents a really strong phase one, really actually good metrics. Phase one, this, this, this to date is about 72% leased or an LOI. So if you take out, you take out Westminster Row and Eden Street, it's 91% leased or an LOI. So of the space that is there, approximately one-third of it is aimed at food service. And that's, that's one of the key merchandising characteristics we were trying to achieve early on. You know, retail, our dining is really anchored today. It's, it's a collection of restaurants. The, the trade area for a collection of restaurants far exceeds the trade areas of any individual use that you might have in a retail setting. It's, it's really the collection of restaurants in a, kind of a, in the fashion that we've, we've got them going into downtown. So we're really seeing the beginning of vibrant mixed use. And Mary Beth will talk about the use, the uses that are coming in.
Thank you, Greg, and I hope you can hear me. And thank you all for allowing me to remote in tonight. Greg did a great job kind of over, giving you an overview. Let me just quickly tell you all a little bit of my background. I started working with the city really on the Orchard Town Center, and that included assembling the land and bringing Greg on board, who wrote that market research study. We had two other sites that really had those anchor tenants. And without his research and the city's fortitude to control that land and build an interchange, that project wouldn't have happened. So there are several members of that team. As we were doing that, I was asked to start to look at the Westminster downtown and look at bringing Greg on board again to look at the viability of retail, but also look at assembling the site. Took time to buy Macy's, buy Mervyn's, buy the land that JCPenney's had, and ultimately buy out the, the mall owner. So the assemblage was important, and we were involved in that. Also involved in the developer discussions and ultimately the decision to do this block by block. I will tell you that it's a brave thing for the city to do. It is being heralded also not only by cities, but by developers who own malls, who have said, this is really brilliant, that you, one person called it crowdsourcing of talent. You're not putting all of your eggs in one basket. And so you find the best developer of the, of the hotel, the best developer for the residential that is needed next and now. And, and ultimately, the key is to top the retail. And one of my roles has been to curate some of the key retailers, not necessarily for a site or for a project, but to the site. So in doing so, that, that involved conversations with Mars-X. Find Foods, which as you all know, and approved their purchase and sale agreement, is coming to the site. They have been in discussions with us for over five years. And it takes that long sometimes with retailers for them to understand what you're, what the site, it, once you take retail off a site, you have to then explain what's coming back on and make sure that people realize that this is not a, a, a retail issue for the site. It's just a different paradigm. So with Tattered Cover, with Mars-X, and with Mark Shaker, who is very successful at the Stanley Marketplace, opening up a 12,000-square-foot food hall by the, by late fall, those are the new anchor tenants. Alamo Drafthouse obviously is also. But when we're doing first-floor discussions and leasing with multiple developers, as Greg described, you have to make sure we don't have four coffee shops on four corners. We could have done that very easily. But we had to work with the developers to say, the coffee shop is there, let's do something better here. And they, and they've all played ball with us, and they've all done a great job in understanding building a tenant mix that doesn't cross over is really, really important. I would just again go back and say that 60% of the project is leased, 73% of the project is signed LOIs or under lease negotiations. The, the issue is getting these tenants built out. And costs are coming in at double what they were about three, three or four months ago. So the developers and the tenants are rolling up their sleeves and figuring it out. I don't see any of the tenants that are signed going elsewhere. I think it's just an issue of time to get it back on, on track. But with that said, by the end of the year, we have that full, at least 65% of that 73% open. And that would include Mars-X, and that would include the food hall. The other tenants that are coming, there is Salon, there is a craft store that just signed a 3,000-square-foot LOI. And I think you guys will really enjoy that. And we are starting to see some of the soft good tenants coming after the dining. As Greg said, it's always important to establish the dining. I think that, and I will just tell you, the tenants that are open, I have talked to some of them, the Famile Restaurant is exceeding their sales projection by 10%. And I know the Tappan Burger is very, very pleased with their sales and almost double what our sales projection for that graph that you saw is. So it is a conservative graph, and they're doing extremely well. So Greg Stoffel always says, you know, success follows success. And it is getting these tenants open, but the good news is the tenants that are open are doing very well. Next slide, please. So I, I was asked to talk about next-gen developments, and I think what's important is that there is continued and strong interest even through this tough time of not only residential, but other uses. So the, the, what we'll talk about tonight is Block C5, which is the block to the north of the Center Park. One half of that is being discussed as a higher mid-rise residential tower. There is, there are two very, very strong developers that we interviewed last week. They're very interested in doing that project. It would be a project that has no incentives. It would be a project at market land rents, land sales, and these are experienced developers. And they're developers that understand the investment of almost a half a billion dollars that this city and the other local and regional developers have put in the site. To ask one developer to put a half a billion dollars into a site is risky and almost untenable. But to spread it among five or six, your product is much, much better. In great cities across this country, whether it be the Back Bay in Boston or, or New York, we're all done block by block by different developers. So I think if we follow history of what's sustainable, we're doing that. The other, the next project that's very, very active, and this, you know, kind of balances, I know that there is a younger population coming into the first market rate housing. One of the mid-rise blocks I'll just comment on is being designed for more of a mature audience and a more mature customer. And they explained how that would be. Then there is what's called the 55 Active Adult. That would be on a separate block. And that is not assisted living. It would have no common space, but it is a really lovely apartment, age-restricted, multi-family development. And there are several developers that are very interested in moving that project forward, which right now, because we've opened up all of the multi-family, we have a three-year hole in, in more multi-family. We are bringing on the townhomes. One thing I would like to mention on the demographics of the townhomes and the condominiums, they're, they're, the developer explained it as kind of the spectrum. So you've got the mid-30s that are buying their first townhome or condo, and you've got the 50 to 60-year-olds that are leaving their homes. So, and those two age groups love the amenities that this project is bringing forward. So there will be more diversity in the population that you see out there. We've also had interest from affordable senior housing, and that's something we can discuss. Those aren't as advanced as the, the former two. Obviously, the, the office is due to close in September, and they're very active with some prospects. So I think bringing daytime traffic to this project is paramount, and that's where the office really comes in. And they can, and, and really the possibility of civic and cultural uses is also important to the site. With COVID and with, with everything that happened with the municipalities and, and communities, I think coming back and revisiting where does that belong on the site is really important. And then the continued investment into the park development. And I know that, you know, Westminster is an incredible city for their parks department, and we really look forward to the continued maturity of those parks. And that is, I think, the end of my slide. John Burke, maybe we go to the next slide.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Okay, thank you all. I'm going to go off camera now.
Great. Thank you, Mary Beth. And I'm just going to close out. We always, everything we do has to be aligned with your strategic plan. So we, we just wanted to touch on that very quickly and help to connect downtown to your vision, that we are a destination. We have well-maintained, beautiful neighborhoods. Downtown is not just an office or retail, but it's a, it's a neighborhood. It's a living, breathing, vibrant place. And those offices and those retailers are going to help diversify our economy. And of course, the events, the placemaking, the parks, all that wonderful elements that we're bringing in downtown help to grow that strong sense of community and belonging. And of course, by being so proactive, by being so forward-thinking, a decade, over a decade ago, you're continuing to foster that economic resilience consistent with your mission. So that should really be applauded. And as we've mentioned, and several of our folks have mentioned, you know, really is a national model for the right thing to do and how to do it. So with that, we are all available, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time. Counselor Baker?
Yes. Thank you for the presentation. It was a very positive presentation, very rosy. Didn't have any numbers attached. I can't do anything without numbers. And your narrative was very nice and it was very caring. I'd like to address a couple of things more in depth on the narrative. How did this become a blight? And when?
Sure. Great question. If you don't mind.
Well, absolutely, Mr. Burks, because you're just.
Let me address that. I didn't introduce myself earlier. I'm Malcolm Murray. I've been practicing over 45 years, and most of that time has been representing cities and towns, even though I have been in private practice. For the last really 30 to 35 years, my specialty has been urban renewal property acquisition, blight determinations, writing urban renewal plans, and then following up the redevelopment. I actually started with Westminster at the Urban Renewal Project of 72nd and Federal back in the mid-'90s. Worked also on what was then called Mandalay Gardens. It's now Shops at Walnut Creek and the Orchard as well. I've written or been participating in blight studies and blight determinations in a number of communities around the state, including probably quite prominently in Lakewood, where we did a couple of. And I was the general counsel for the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority through the Belmar redevelopment process. But I've been, I've worked at Steamboat Springs, Silverthorn, Evans, Colorado Springs, Trinidad, all over the state. Certainly by the, by, by 2000, the Westminster Mall qualified as blighted. It represented, it met the, the definition of blight in the state statute. It was a declining property with retailers leaving, substantial vacancies, a lack of maintenance. And, you know, it clearly was on its way to meeting that definition by the time we adopted the, made the blight determination, I should say, you made the blight determination in 2009. I don't think there was any question that the, that mall property was blighted. It met that definition of deterioration, a lack of maintenance, a lack of caring, and it certainly did not have an owner that was committed to improving it or removing those blight conditions.
If I can push out a little further, you know, Colorado Revised Statutes 3125-103 actually puts out the definition, and it requires four of the conditions to be met. And as I've reviewed it, I can only see two of the conditions being met. Because for urban renewals, this has to represent a menace to the state of Colorado, not to the city of Westminster, but a menace to the state of Colorado.
No, it doesn't require it to be a menace per se. It has to meet at least four of those conditions. I would have to go back and look at the blight resolution, but my recollection is recited, I think, seven conditions as being present at the time. But again, that's, that's been a while ago, and I'd certainly like to look at that resolution. But I think, in my mind, and in my mind, and my experience around the state, and by that time, by 2009, I had probably drafted and participated in probably about somewhere between 15 and 20 blight determinations around the state. This was by far one of the, one that unquestionably met the blight definition.
URAs have been a very contentious thing, and I'm sure you're fully aware how even the Colorado Municipal League cautions its members to truly objectively look at urban renewal versus economic development, which is the way URAs have been misused.
And I've been one counseling the Colorado Municipal League on that distinction. It is not an economic development tool. It is a means of alleviating conditions of blight. I've, I've spoken at a number of CML conventions and attorney conferences on making sure that you don't, you don't use it for the wrong purpose, because there's no question that if you get close to the line, people are going to criticize, and they're going to say it's being misused. Because it is, it, it is a powerful tool, and it should be used carefully. And I counsel all of my clients, including the, the city of Westminster, on numerous occasions, be careful to, to ensure that those conditions are met.
Now I'd like to go into and get more of the details on the formation of the general improvement district. You had just given us a talk about GIDs and BIDs, hadn't you?
Yes.
Right. And how they can only be done by really private entities, tax-paying entities.
Right. And the, the purpose, the purpose of doing it of either a GID, a BID, or a metro district, when you're doing an urban renewal area, is to use that special taxing district to enhance those TIF revenues and to provide a separate revenue source to be able to finance public improvements on the site, as well as to maintain those over the long term. And when we discussed creating that GID, one of the concerns, I think from the council, but certainly from staff as they were discussing with, with me, was that there was a desire for the city to be able to maintain control over the district so that it controlled the tax burden that was being imposed, and then how that, how those taxes were to be spent for the, for the maintenance of the area, for the public improvements, so that rather than having a board made up of a private developer or private entities who could abuse that district, as has happened in a number of metro districts around the state, that the city council wanted to be able to have control over it. The best way to do that was a general improvement district. General improvement district required, at the time, it still does, a private landowner to come forward and requ- a private landowner to come forward and request the creation of that General Improvement District.
Right, and who was the private landowner and really how much?
Well, in that case, we went.
Because it was something like $60 million worth of public improvements.
Yeah, and at that point, well, it wasn't $60 million worth of public improvements. That, that was a separate issue with the COP. But the General Improvement District, we needed to have a private landowner petition. I think frankly, the state statute should be changed to allow municipality to create its own General Improvement District. But it doesn't. So we went to Alamo Drafthouse, which at the time, we were under contract with. It would benefit not only Alamo, but all of the, the entire urban renewal area. And we sold them a small piece of property. They petitioned the council and the council put in place the GID.
Okay, so it was, so it was, I mean, the city purposely and intentionally selling a 200 square foot parcel of land to one individual owner, who then went through the legal mechanism of petitioning for an election and having a vote to tax himself. And then after taxing that, then the city asked to have all of their property ownings put into the GID. So in a sense, it was almost a straw buyer for the city.
No, no, I wouldn't characterize it that, that way at all. It was actually the city that imposed the mill levy and authorized the mill levy.
Well, it's the GID who does the levy.
Well, the, the city council acting as the board of the GID. And that was the very purpose of using this mechanism, was to keep the city council in control.
And there were, and there were other of, okay, the private landowners that didn't want to participate, well, the Boeing Alley and the Dentists.
I don't recall that that was the case, whether the issue was even raised.
Okay, and they're not in the GID, are they? That's correct. Okay, and is really Penny's in the GID or not?
Yes.
They can petition into the GID, yes.
Did they?
They have not.
They have not petitioned them. So basically, all the private landowners in this thing are not part of the GID? Even though a GID can only be made by private?
No, no, all of the, all of the landowners that we have sold land to are in the GID. That's correct. Thank you very much.
Sorry, can I make sure that, did you catch the council's question on JCPenney? Is, is JCPenney in or not in the GID?
They have not petitioned.
As they withdrew their bankruptcy, we correspond with them. They can petition anytime and in fact, it'd be less expensive for them to do so.
And I believe in the, one of the provisions in their new lease says that they will petition if appropriate, when we request them to do so.
Was there ever a timeline for really development at the new downtown? I mean, we've already heard, exalted the benefits of patients, which in the private sector might not have existed. Has there ever been a timeline for really development of the new downtown?
I'll generally answer that question, which is, we always talk about a 15 to 20 year timeline for build out of the downtown site. Right now, about 30% of our contractor have constructed or sold. So I think we're, we're pacing well. I would say, you know, COVID didn't help us as pertaining to certain developments, office being one category. But I feel very confident, as long as we continue with that pace and the type of developments, we'll be on track to meet that, that goal.
Okay, and how much really office space has been built there?
Currently, there is zero office space.
And we've built more than a third of all the authorized apartments there?
About, yes.
And if you go to your chart with the, your chart, your slide with the bar charts and tax? Okay? Don't know if we can put that up.
We can go to slide.
Excellent, there it is, perfect, someone's listening. What happens two years to the right?
So the, the urban renewal area sunset in 2038. So that last bar that you're looking at right there, there is a significant drop off in that URA down to just the city's portion.
So in other words, in that last bar, all the gray is gone?
Almost all of it. We still collect our city mill levy of, I think, 3.65, a very small portion.
So we'll lose over half the revenues from that chart.
Which is why it's important to continue the pace of development that we're on right now so that the GID in that retail can then backfill that. So yes, it is crucial that we don't miss out on all those. Let me put it this way, all those, that gray area that's in there right now, if we were to stop developing, we would lose all that revenue. We'd never see it.
Absolutely true. And, and basically, we're, we're there on the very right hand side.
We're on the, right now, we're on the very left hand side, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We're on the very left hand side. And if there's no more development, then the little gray bars, the short little stubby gray bar, all the way across.
You massively disappointed from the vision the city's put together, yes.
Yes. Okay, and when did the city first come up with this vision? When did the people come up with this vision?
Right, yeah. I had occasion recently to go back through all the emails and documents that I have over the years. And generally speaking, there were a series of actions taken by the city council, I think, as a result of a number of discussions between 2008 and 2011 that really crystallized this vision. I know that Mayor McNally was the mayor at the time. She can probably speak to it as well as I can, probably with more authority. But there were a number of, a number of documents that were drafted that describe this urban mixed-use center that was vibrant, active, with a mix of retail, office, and residential uses.
Right, right, because I actually have a memo from the Van Meter, Williams, and Pollock dated May of 1908.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a, and it's a fully developed plan bearing striking resemblance to the plan we have now, except our plan now has been rotated 45 degrees.
Yeah, it's, that, that was one of.
And that was the one where they wanted to reuse four of the anchors.
Pardon?
They wanted to reuse four of the anchors.
That would have been great if the anchors had survived.
And who were the four companies that we dealt with? In a master plan? One of them was Oliver McMillan. Was one of them Steiner?
Steiner was one of.
Was one of them General Growth Properties?
Yes.
And do you know who the fourth one was?
Mary Beth may remember. I don't recall.
The fourth one was the DeBartle Companies out of Tampa.
Yeah.
They're very interested in doing something very quickly.
And that, we were talking to them in that 2009, 2012, 14 timeframe. And it was not a good time for developers. It was, we were seeing the fallout, the, the pale end of the 2000, 2007, 2008 financial crisis. And they were trying to envision what could be done. And none of them frankly had the financial wherewithal to take on a project of this size. That was one of the serious drawbacks. The other was that several of those developers had a primarily retail oriented vision that as they got into it and looked for anchors and retailers, they were having a hard time finding people who would put in the money and the investment. They were also having a difficult time finding the financial resources, the, the funding sources for something of this size.
Well, why don't I let other people ask some questions? I don't, and then I can ask them more later.
I just ask us, when we're asking questions, allow the person to answer the question before we talk over them. Who's next? Oh, Mayor Protim?
So I have a couple of questions about moving into the future. And I mean, I've said on the record before, I, I don't like government going into the development, but we are where we are. So my question is more how we maintain being successful in the future and coming up with something that the community likes. I've heard throughout time that the retail is strong in this area, which I always find interesting since the mall died, but we think that the retail is still there and it seems like it's always stayed there. So trying to make sure that we come up with the mix, I think, obviously is important. But one of my concerns is, is around us being too constrictive around what we allow in, not allowing the market to move. I mean, you use the example of having two coffee shops and, and not allowing that because we're the developer. But I mean, don't we want to let the market decide whether or not a coffee shop wants to open next to another coffee shop and whether or not they can survive? I mean, that's a concern of mine. And you don't have to answer it, but anecdotally, I don't understand that. I think my bigger concern though is the amount of, of office that you're talking about. Because it seems like we're talking about potentially increasing that. You had mentioned about the mayor being here before. And I think that this, this plan from the ones I've seen over time has transitioned into something, you know, that was less dense, more dense, less dense. And we're talking more dense again. And I, I am concerned about the density. I know that I've talked in the past about the amount of traffic that that could bring and what, what's sustainable. Because if I, if this is truly that much more, you know, butts and seats, or however you want to look at it, if it's office space or, or retail, I mean, anybody who was in town in the mid 90s and you tried to drive down 88th or 92nd, and we're talking about condensing those roads, I believe I've heard in the past, and I don't know if that's the current plan or, or not, but I have concern about that portion of it. Because I want us to make sure that we have something that's not going to have to be, I mean, ripping what you've put in place now would be pretty destructive. So making sure that we build stuff out that's not going to go away and that's actually sustainable. And we're not going to have to look at the roads and look at expanding them or whatever. So I mean, can you talk to me about that portion of it and what we're looking at moving forward? And how we can make sure that our actual infrastructure can sustain the plan forward? Because I'm far more interested than that. Because we can't go back and change the things of the past, whether or not I like them or not, is, you know, it is what it is. So how, how do we make sure we're successful and actually that this is going to fit?
That's right. So, Councilor, yeah, I'm Mayor Protim. That was the number one concern we had. As Councilor Mello remembers, we sat here in 2016 and had a public meeting and we talked specifically about traffic. We hired a company, Fox Total Hernandez, at the time, and did a mobility study for the entire downtown and surrounding areas. One of the interesting outcomes of that particular report, when you think about a 1.2 million square foot region mall, everybody's driving in at the same time and everybody's driving out at the same time, generally speaking, particularly Christmas, Black Friday, things like that. That's when I remember as a kid, being backed up on the bridge of 92nd Avenue, couldn't even get in, right? It was just ridiculous to do that. What the study has shown us is as the development is now very diverse, we have office, which is now daytime use coming in, leaving in the evening. You have residential who's now leaving in the morning and coming back at night. You have the retail that's kind of more curated to those local vendors. And so they'll come into different activities. What that study showed us is that if we do that full build out of the downtown, it's only then that we'll start to meet those traffic volumes that we had during the heyday of the mall. And so that was again, number one thing we did. The additional thing is the distribution of the network around and through the porosity of downtown. Historically, mall, 88th, Harlan, 92nd, Sheridan. Now you have Westminster Boulevard, Eden, 89th, 90th, 91st. So you have a variety of ways to get in and through and around downtown. So that distribution also helped that traffic demand study that we did. It is also something we're to continue to monitor. Their traffic team under Community Development will continue to analyze what are those backups? What are those demands? What are the timing? So we make sure that we do have a functional and vibrant downtown that's easy to get into. The last thing we want to do is invest all this into the downtown and then nobody can get there.
That makes sense and I appreciate that, that context and you kind of addressing that. Two other things that I, I would like your perspective on. So I know, say, a year ago, we had conversation and you alluded to it about what office space was doing. And we thought that there was going to be a shift. And it's now, it seems like it's kind of potentially swinging back the other way when people realize that remote working is not all it's cracked up to be. So I'm kind of curious about, you know, some expanded information, what you know about, about that, you know, aside from it just coming back. The other thing I'm curious about, and I remember talking about this prior to the pandemic, I had went to a, an event, it was actually a network event in Cisco, and they were talking about the change in store space in brick and mortar had actually continued to grow, even though we'd seen like the traditional malls go away because people were looking for more of those experienced kind of shopping things. And so in this event I went to, they were talking about how technology such as Wi-Fi can help retailers because they're using that to kind of look at demographics and foot traffic of shoppers, but also in ways that, the example they use is if you go to a store, maybe they don't have it in stock, but they can have it shipped straight to your house kind of shopping. And so we, that's what we were seeing prior to the pandemic. Do you, so those two things, I'm curious, any, anything that you guys know about what the markets are doing, that would be helpful for us as we go forward in conversations?
Sure, I'll, I'll just start out. But addressing some of the retail, and certainly Greg can jump in as the retail expert. But you're right, that's where retail is transitioning. And those retailers in particular, remember those anchor stores we talked about? They were the slowest to turn their ship around and embrace online shopping and embrace that ability to help the customer locate, get it to your house the next day. We don't have it, but, you know, da, 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 there you go. It'll be shipped to your house tomorrow. And we're seeing that these stores for retailers are becoming more of showplaces, right? So when you're walking in, you're having more of an experience. You're able to test drive some of those products. You're able to touch the sweaters. You can try the makeup. You can do different things there. But they know, they know full well, you may be buying those online or you may be ordering them through a portal at the store. So absolutely, all those innovations are impacting the way that we retail and it's driving more of an experiential retail, as you mentioned. Absolutely, 100%. And as Greg had mentioned, you know, being driven by the restaurants. So that's another experience, the bars and restaurants is, is driving people to these sites more and more.
The tech, the technology available to individual retailers has expanded exponentially in the last five years. And by all accounts, it will, it will, you know, quadruple. There's even a, a way to describe how, how much knowledge individual retailers and restaurants will have on their customer base. Just, just walking, you know, like that map that I put in, put on for Alamo Drafthouse, just that, that represents the home locate, we know the home locations of everybody who walked in the building. And we, and we know how long they, we can, we can metric how long they stayed, where they went before, where they went after, what path they came, what roads to get here, et cetera, et cetera. And you just, you take the ability to do that and for some of the smaller retailers. And things are to continue to change. Categories will change in terms of patronage. What's really heavy online may shift back slightly to in-store because, you know, we found out through the pandemic that the people, minute it was lifted, people are flooding back into centers. The outdoor centers tend to do, do much better. So we're, I think we have an environment that, you know, will encourage those type of kind of, you know, forward thinking tenants.
The last two things I wanted to ask about, one is, in the past, you've shown us in the grab on the, the revenue projections when we kind of break even and you didn't really talk about that tonight. And I always think that's good to hit back just so people understand where that is. And the last thing was, and this is kind of learning from the Orchard Town Center, as we develop moving forward and understanding that, you know, we kind of, as a society, shift back and forth from restaurants versus shopping, but we like to go out places. Are we keeping some of those learnings in mind that we learned from the Orchard Town Center where we had to improve our infrastructure because of the shift up there from shopping to?
Sure, I'll, let me ask that. We have a second part of that question. We have a second part of that question on the infrastructure itself, yeah. With Public Works and Utilities, we designed all of that infrastructure for the full buildout. And so that's very much in place. And we check in once a year, did that use stay exactly the same as it was for the plan? Has that now shifted? Is we make sure we're always updating that modeling for the downtown specifically. Do you want to talk about, well, breakeven point? I know Bob Beierhoff is here as well from our finance department, so he and John Mullins on the call. Keep that financial model open for us. I don't know if you want to throw out a date of that breakeven point that we always talk about.
Good evening. And there's different ways to look at a breakeven. And what I'm going to bring up more specifically right now is the breakeven point when we're going to meet the debt service, the COPs. Council approved the use of property tax increment, Don planned out, ends in 38, to pay for the COPs. And right now, we have a projection of just the property tax alone hitting that roughly in between 26 and 27. So we'll be able to pay our debt service in full and above that is, is obviously breakeven. And that doesn't include, obviously, the sales tax.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, if I could, I wanted to address your question about office and the transitioning nature of that. So what we see being proposed in the downtown area are highly amenitized. So we're talking spaces with beautiful gyms and wellness centers and daycares and all sorts of amenities, quiet rooms and just an attractor. So what we're hearing from office developers is that they have to build a product that attracts the workers there because the workers today have so many choices and also so many remote options. So it's about being a highly configurable space, very, very high-end space, highly amenitized, as I said. And also this location, you know, it's not just well-positioned because of where it is within our city, but also being along that 36th corridor, we've always, we've always pitched the city of Westminster as being smack dab between the hubs of Denver and Boulder. So you can attract talent and your worker shed is much more further reaching than if you were at one end of the metro or one end of the front range. You know, so those are just some thoughts on the office.
Great, thank you very much.
Mayor Protem, two points I think we ought to emphasize on an earlier point. In addition to the distributed nature of traffic from a mixed-use center versus a single-use retail center, which drove, which drives the highest volumes at the peak times and then extremely underutilized that infrastructure in the off-peak times to almost nothing, which is why you see such a wide right-of-way on the 36th overpass there. It was built for that peak. So, so that changes. The other thing to add, of course, is that this is right on top of the, one of the largest, if not the largest RTD bus hubs, transit hubs, 500-plus buses a day serve downtown Westminster. So that offsets, when people come in, they'll often use that debt service and we're enhancing it, of course, with the tunnel connection to the downtown, it's other construction now. The second thing I would add on, on office space is, Leed Silver is the Denver Standard Class A Leed Silver Office is what is in demand right now and there isn't any of that here. So this would, this will produce the highest demand office space in, in the front range here in the downtown, which is why it's so marketable right now, why, why these office investors are so bullish on downtown Westminster. There just isn't any competition for Class A Leed Silver Office space.
Great, thank you very much.
Councilor Seymour?
Thank you, Mayor. And this question is out of the blue, so if we don't have the numbers, that's fine too. But other than Westminster Road and Aspire, do we know what our percentage leased is? And then adding those in, not retail, but residential? And then adding in those two newest locations where we're at on lease space? And then, my understanding is all the townhomes are sold? So the demand is there? Okay, thank you.
So on the, kind of walk through, I might actually ask Mona Scherer here in a second. She keeps in close contact with all of our developers on the tenant lease sub. So just to walk through the four different residential projects, the Eden Street, obviously the affordable housing has a waitlist, fully occupied. The Ascent that opened up in November 2019, I think is hovering around 95% occupied? The amazing part is the two projects that just opened in January, first being the Aspire, is that, Mona, can I put you on the spot?
I believe that 50% occupied, only 67% preleased.
Yeah, so 50% occupied, occupied and 67% preleased. And then Westminster Road? What's hovering about this?
Twenty, twenty-eight of the units are leased with active discussions underway.
Twenty-eight, okay. So they have actually been projecting fairly well with some of those. And in kind of a sad note, some of the Marshall fires have actually brought some of those residents that used to live there to our downtown because of proximity.
Just a follow-up question, just the Aspire, and I know privately owned, but do we know, do we know what a lease rate is for a two-bedroom in there? Not, not counting the ones on the top floor with the 20-foot ceilings with the cool look?
I can go ahead and answer that because I was recently in the hunt for a place left in November. So, so yes, two-bedroom, it was, it was going at about $2,500. And as you said, the, the ones on the top there were about $5,000 a month.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilor Emmons?
With my previous work in transportation, could you dispel or confirm the, I understand that whole-size buses, the streets are too narrow if you go down when fully built out with cars parked on both sides? Can we, has that been confirmed? Have we worked with RTD on navigation? Because I mean, it's going to be a hub, I'm sure you would want transportation through our streets there.
Yeah, no, great question. I can answer that. So Councilor Mello and I, actually, that was one of the very first meetings we had on the downtown site, was with RTD. And we talked specifically about where are the stops, which, you know, transit locations are going to be the best fit. What they decided was to do Harlan Street and 88th. So those are your major areas.
So would not go through downtown?
They're not going through.
Although, we, we did size the turn good, but we didn't want to give up on Westminster Boulevard. So we did construct the curb around the Central Plaza from, what is it, the 89th?
Eighty-ninth, where it goes, and right into the pass.
Just in case.
Okay. So a lot of outlines, I'm using your handy, Danny, map. It's probably worn and outdated now. It says June of 2021, so if we can get a new updated map, that would be great. Do we have enough parking for buildout for the entirety of use of, resident wants to go down downtown, do we have enough parking that would allow for, for such entertainment or food to easily access our downtown area?
Sure, yeah, and I can answer that as well. So the answer is, we had built, that was the very first thing we did in the downtown, was build the 888-stall parking structure. That's the first public asset we brought into that. We now have also in addition to that, some service lots that ultimately will be developed. We are looking at joint ventures for additional parking structures that would be public. So that whole parking demand study is continually evolving depending on where the densities occur and with what part of that. We bring in a big, I will just say this, we had Harvest Fest with 35,000 people, no way do we park everybody on-site. So we bring it in just like major events where they park offsite and bring it in. But if you're data to activities from restaurants to movies, all those kind of typical things, absolutely want to have a parking in downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Isadore?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. One, the, the property tax increment, so we're breakeven by 2027, is that what you said?
Yeah, to pay to debt service on?
To, to pay to debt service. What's the driver for the acceleration there? That wasn't the plan, right? That's faster than we, than we planned?
No, that's always been, in fact, we look back at previous graphs, it's always been right around 2027, that breakeven point.
Okay, so that's not any indication of we're doing so much better than we thought?
No, in fact, it's, we thought for sure, I'll speak for myself, I thought during the COVID and the pandemic, that it would have spread out to like 2029 and we lost some time. As John Mullins on the call, Bob Beierhoff and Larry and others have ratcheted into that financial model, it's showing we're right on track and not, Mary Beth had mentioned some of the revenues from retailers are exceeding expectations. And so we're looking within, I would say, Larry, weeks or months of that original projection that we gave.
But some of the openings were delayed though, right, because of COVID? Yet we are still on track. So there is some kind of overperformance happening.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, because we were certainly handicapped by COVID nineteen and by those delays in opening. So I would like to say yes, I think, I think we're ahead.
Trying to give you some credit.
I appreciate it, I know, I know.
My second question is on the diversification of the restaurants. What's the plan there to bring in more culturally diverse origins, modern pop shops, not the big box, but?
Sure, absolutely. Great question. Having very authentic and unique to Westminster, not just restaurants, but the retailers there is paramount to our plan because we didn't want to become a cookie cutter, you know, Disney World kind of experience, we wanted to be real true downtown. And I would like to turn it over to Mary Beth. Mary Beth, if you could, if you could talk a little bit about how you're targeting those very special and authentic end users?
Well, and thanks, Lindsay, and great question, board member. It is, it was paramount from the first council that we go after local and regional tenants. And it is first-generation space. So, so for a tenant to build out in this first-generation space, even with an extraordinary allowance from developers, takes a, a strong number. I will tell you, the food hall is very much committed to diversity and it's the, the best way for a local tenant to become a part of this project that then could ultimately move into a space. So the food hall plays a couple of different roles and the owner, Mark Shaker, is very open to sitting down with you all and talking about what's important. He has a couple of, I don't want to say standard ones that come into his food hall, but I think he really wants to learn more about the, the ethnic desires and we really want to do it too. It's, it's hard when we sit down with a retailer and explain what it takes to actually go into one of these spaces. And again, there, we do our best to, to make that happen. I will tell you again, most of these tenants that we're dealing with, and there is a Korean barbecue wing concept going in on the corner of Harlan and 88th. He's under, he's trying to get under construction. He also has a tea concept, which I think will be really neat. And so I think we are going to start to branch out from, from the, you know, the burger fries. And I think we're doing, we, we got one of the top burger guys in Denver and he's, he's doing phenomenally well. But, but we are committed in the tenant mix to going forward. I also wanted to answer Board Member Demott's question about two coffee shops on two corners. It really was for the phase one. Now it's open game. There will be a coffee shop in, in the food hall. There will be some crossover, the market will take over. But what we didn't want to do is encourage developers to do the low-hanging fruit, as we call it, where everybody wanted a coffee shop. And so it, it was never a contentious discussion, it was more, let us discuss what, what works. So I will tell you, at this point, there are very few mechanisms that control what a developer can put into their retail.
Thank you for that. I, I just want to reiterate that we should be as intentional as we can to make sure, when we think about this from a community standpoint, we want to unite the community and bring, and have a hub where they can actually come and feel welcomed and, and it's not just for our culturally diverse residents, everyone, right? Because a lot of our residents go to Denver for culture or go to Arvada for culture, various places, for food, for different kinds of food, whereas we have a lot of burgers joints, like you said, right? This would be a nice place to encourage as much as we can some diversity.
I agree. Not only, not only does that, that, that aspect broadens the trade area and brings more people who are exposed to downtown. So part of the reason you have a big, big line for big mix, diverse mix of restaurants is to bring in people from wider, then they, they get exposed to downtown and then they start participating and patronizing other regions.
People from Denver can come here and we can get theirselves.
I'd like to just jump on that and say that while I don't disagree, I think that we need to have a balance of playing with the, with the fair private market, right? Because we were just at a site visit with a Westminster business who, Lindsay, as you know, said they wanted someone to come and fill their space. And Westminster said no. And it was very different, we almost lost that business. And it's a very mean, it's a very revenue-producing business for Westminster. And so while I recognize that there's a balance and we want that diversity, I just want to make sure that we caution and don't lose businesses because we are cherry-picking on what we would like to see. Absolutely.
My question is, the library back in 2011, and great discussions with Jefferson County because that part of the world is in Jefferson County, and we've been paying taxes for libraries for 43 years or more. And we have nothing. And so when this first came up, what we were going to do, I put them on notice and sometimes that's hell when somebody shows back up. And here I am again, so they need to know we're serious and they have our money and the closest Jeffco library we have is Stanley Lake in Arvada. And we deserve one. I don't care, we talked about a smaller size because of the inner workings of libraries these days, but we deserve one and that is the place to have one. So if you need any arm twisting, I'm happy. Don't break arms, but I could be bruised. Anyone?
Um, I wasn't going to mention this, but yeah, in the Jeffco library conversation, it did come back up, probably, I don't know, 2017, 2018, went with former open space parks, you know, PR and L Director Jason Gank and I went and presented to the Jeffco Group back when they were doing their master planning process and, well, we thought we were making a good pitch, they ultimately came back and said, you know, that's not in our current plan. So I would totally second going back to them and continuing.
Yes. So. Sort of like RTD and no train. Yeah. They're on my list.
Just a couple of questions. I'm, I'm glad to hear things are all going well and things are still moving. I do appreciate the fact that we're still focusing in on bringing a diverse mix of retailers to the side. I do, and I would second the, you know, the desire to see some cultural representation, particularly in that market hall. I know, I said it several years ago. Oh, say it again. So that's, that's great. The, let's see, two, two main question, or actually three questions. The first is around the road in, the Sheridan overpass, is that not also doing an increase to the capacity on Sheridan right there? Aren't we adding a lane?
We are, yeah. There will be a third lane over the bridge that currently is down to two lanes, yes.
Okay, so theoretically, that will make the traffic flow better than it did before with this improvement?
I would say theoretically, we'll see, but it's definitely safer than what's out there currently. The way that configuration was, and if you remember the, the slip ramp off of, from 92nd South towards Sheridan, that was a free-flowing right-hand turn and there was a, in fact, our transportation engineer was here, he could tell you, the number of side swipes that occurred in that intersection were significant. The modifications out there now that'll make that a mandatory stop condition and then to turn right, so very safe situation. So safety as well as capacity.
Okay, good. And then a question about the approach to folding in some affordable housing. I know we have new residential projects that are looking at coming in and before we had looked at trying to integrate those, you know, some affordable units into the market-rate projects. Is that something that we're still asking of developers or are we kind of more focused on individual projects?
Could probably answer that one. So the short story is, I think there are a number of conversations. So the short story is, I think there are a number of conversations that I think we want to have with this council, particularly looking forward with the affordable housing components within those. What we've found to date is the ones that we do have have been incentivized to do so, to have a mixture of those affordable units within those buildings. Moving forward, we've talked about the fifty-five plus affordable housing senior project as a standalone, particularly when it comes to some of the financing components. We're not ignorant of the fact that we need to have affordable workforce housing in the downtown, period. How we achieve that, I think, is up for conversation with this council and as we drive to whatever is next in, in the downtown.
No, I, I think you've covered it. You know, as you know, it does often take incentives from the local government, either through private activity bonds or special financing or CDBG or something like that, which would all require another conversation.
And at some point, are we going to have another or some sort of conversation? We've had parking come up many times. Are we going to discuss that at another day?
Are you asking in terms of the ease and understandability of parking?
Lots of things. How much we're paying for and how much we're getting on return and a ton of things.
I've got no more than two different texts from one of our county commissioners that has gotten tickets every time she goes down there. It says it's very confusing to know what she's supposed to do and not supposed to do. So I certainly would like to understand it better because I feel like it's a pretty smart individual and it seems to be very frustrating for them, so.
And I've had some where people couldn't figure it out and they just left and went someplace else.
And I had to call a friend, i.e. Wadi, and ask him how to park without getting a ticket myself.
So absolutely, we have heard those conversations, and I know Jody has gotten calls about that as well from folks in the community. So we're working really close with Wadi, who is your parking manager in community development, and have had many conversations. We're aligning with him on how we promote market, tell the story of how to park and how to park with ease. We're very grateful that he actually has put together a new signage package and has been working on the installation of those. We as well, and John, I don't know if you want to talk about this, but our, our own wayfaring signage. So we have reprioritized the, the way that the signs were going to be placed to emphasize parking and helping it to be more clear for folks where, where you can park, how you can park. And we also have, are working with our communications liaison now on a four for free sort of campaign. So the first four hours in any of the lots, and we're working on an infographic for that, are free. Sorry, for anyone who's listening out there in YouTube land, you know, you can, first four hours, any surface lot and the garage is free. It's when you park in those onsite, on, on street spaces where you have to use the app or use a pay station and you are charged to do that. But first four hours are free, four for free. We're trying to make that a thing in a, a new campaign that we're, we're working on now, but I don't know if you want to talk about the wayfaring.
Yes, and no, we are looking at getting our first installation of the wayfinding signage in downtown as well to help people navigate through there to find places like parking, Central Square, the park and things like that. So that is currently, finally is finalizing design and getting ready for our first installation sometime this fall, actually. So we're pretty excited about that. As far as the parking kind of deep dive, I might recommend, again with interim manager Andrew's direction, committee development director Dave Downey, you're behind me, could be a study session to talk specifically about this parking. What are the concerns? What are hearing from constituents? How can we solve some of those things? Talk about the revenue side of it, you know, what are we investing? What does that return on that investment? So I think our, our staff would be happy to participate in that as well.
Board Member Baker?
Yes, thanks again. How, of the, as built, how many restaurants are there and how many are planned to be there? Do you have a number?
Mary Beth, are you there?
Yes, I am. Right now, I would say that there are, you know, what we talk about is thirty percent ultimately. I can't give you, you know, the number right now is probably five. Ultimately, thirty percent of the hundred and sixty thousand will be restaurant space. Depending on the size would determine the numbers. You know, Mark Shaker, with his twelve thousand feet, probably brings in ten different users. So if you count that as one or ten, that, that matters. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. And when it comes to places selling alcohol, how many do we have and how many do we plan as the as-built? And then how many do we plan in total?
I would say most will carry, you know, Tattered Cover. We talk about experiential retail. Tattered Cover added a wine bar. And, and this is their first wine bar, and they're doing wine bars in all of their stores and coffee bars because that's important to creating a place for people to come. I would say the coffee shops, the tea stores will not have wine. The dessert and the ice cream will not have alcohol. But I would say probably eighty percent of those will have some form of wine or alcohol.
So we have, so we have two sellers now, Alamo and Tattered Cover. And how many in the, do we envision?
Well, you have the meal restaurant and you also have Tappan Burger. So you have four right now. And again, depending on the number of restaurants, I would use a percentage versus a number. And Greg, you might chime in, but I think eighty percent is probably a good amount to consider because that's what, you know, Mars X will sell wine and beer. You can count them, too.
Seventy-five percent of the establishments will be something other than fast casual or quick serve. And then we would expect that they would require the ability to serve alcohol to make a profit.
Okay, so of the hundred and sixty thousand square feet of retail that's there now, thirty percent of them are going to be?
Well, it's a hundred and sixty thousand square feet of total retail and dining.
That's built now, right? Or is it total development?
That's correct.
Which one?
Thirty, hundred and sixty thousand totals built excluding JCPenney and Bolero. It includes, the hundred and sixty includes Alamo. And Alamo has Pandora's Box, which serves alcohol as well. So that's an extra one we left out. If you consider that as a separate thing, separate unit of the, I don't know how many. Do you have the total number, Mary Beth?
Well, again, I would say right now, there's two that don't have alcohol. And that would be the coffee shop and the tea store. So if, if we're adding, you know, if you look at the number of retail tenants that are going in, I, I think the eighty percent number is, is a good number.
It's typical for a district or center to have that. In a shopping, in a, in a mall, you might, the food court wouldn't typically have alcohol. And that, that would skew, but we're not doing a, we're not doing a food court, we're doing a market hole. And so I would, I would expect seventy-five to eighty percent.
And then in the rest of the development, how many more restaurants and alcohol sellers are going to have?
Well, a couple of the buildings really beg for restaurants. There, the C five, block C five building along the park would show two restaurants that should about four thousand square feet. So you would add two there. Westminster Row has two spaces. But I will also say that, you know, dining can't overwhelm this project. And I think we're all aware of that. Like the Orchard Town Center, the first thing that opened was Rock Bottom Brewery and several restaurants with bars. It's what brings, it's the gathering place. It's, it's three margaritas. And then the, you know, witch witches come in and some of the fast casuals. But I would say the majority of restaurants up at the Orchard carry alcohol.
And basically, how many are going to be in the D series of blocks?
Not many, because those are really set for office. So there may be an, you know, a restaurant on a, on a corner site. Westminster Boulevard and the park is really, you're seeing probably the prime retail, four restaurants going in along Eighty-Eighth and along Westminster Boulevard. So, you know, while the D two block, which is right by the C three block, by the same developer, may have one restaurant, I would say most of them are along Westminster Boulevard and the park.
Thank you. Okay, and then going to the parking, right now, we're running a negative five hundred thousand dollars a year to park, to operate the parking management, right?
Roughly.
Okay, when do we expect that to break even?
So back to the previous statement, we could have a deep dive with our parking management team to review that.
Greg, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? The only question is, how does the communication happen when things change? And that's going to change maybe the amount of water for that area? How do you, how do you all keep in tabs with that so we don't get into trouble?
Yeah, so we mentioned how we meet with Public Works and Utilities Department at least once a year, if not quarterly, and they review every single project that comes in. And that's one of the very first questions that gets asked. What's the service commitments? How is it being allocated? Are we meeting the densities that were envisioned for downtown? And very specifically, and again, Councilor Mal, remember these weeks, we clearly say, hey, we think we want to put a little more density here. Well, then the response is, well, then you can't have as much over there. And so we meet and do a constant refresh of that every single year.
I, I just think it's important for any citizens listening and, and they see maybe or hear maybe more density, they needed to hear that, that you are, you know, you have, if you're going to take over here, you have to give over there.
We got a budget.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. It was long and extensive. I know we have a long agenda tonight, but we may not get through it either. So we're just taking one piece at a time because we have to do the deep dive and we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you so much. It might be one.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
We'll take, we'll take a five-minute break while.
Quick five versus a long five.
Yeah.
We just. And there's cake. Doesn't have any chocolate rings, a cake.
...
Okay. The next up?
Next up, Mr. Dye.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and Council. Dave Downing, City's Community Development Director. With us tonight remotely out of an abundance of caution is Chief Building Official, Dave Horace. We are here at Council's previous request to give some background on the history and purpose of the city's rental property inspection program. So, with that, I will ask Dave Horace to lead the presentation.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. As Dave said, my name is Dave Horace. I'm the building official of the City of Westminster. I'm the division head over the building department, which also includes the rental inspection program for rental units. Next slide, please. The rental inspection program was started in Westminster in, in about 25 years ago. It has been successful throughout the years in, in great part to not only just telling owners what they needed to fix and maintain, but to, in great part to, goes to building relationships, educating tenants and landlords about our housing program and the benefits of, of the program. We're very much intent on providing education. We would much rather see the landlords and, and property owners spend money on their properties instead of paying fines or spending time in, in court with us arguing over deficiencies of the properties. Next slide, please. The emphasis for the program came out of a council and staff concern of the deteriorating condition of many of the large multifamily projects and the deteriorating effect it had on the community. This Westminster program is somewhat unique in Colorado. That is mostly a systematic program and not complaint-based. We only deal with rental properties and include standards for health and safety as well as neighborhood concerns. Those differ somewhat from other jurisdictions that mostly focus on residential properties and mostly focus on complaint-based properties only. Our program is developed based on a National Property Maintenance Code. We also looked at local jurisdictions that were also doing rental inspections at the time. City of Glendale, City of Aurora, City of Boulder. And then select ideas from other jurisdictions, particularly in the East Coast, where these types of programs are much more common. The program was tailored specifically to Westminster to do it systematically to address these deteriorating properties that I'd previously mentioned, something that we didn't think could be done in a complaint-based program. Next slide, please. Here are some examples of conditions that the code is intended to address. Many mechanical issues. The, the picture on your left there shows a, a water heater that's been replaced recently. You can see the new water lines into it, but they didn't complete the job. It has not been properly spilling carbon monoxide into the units. The middle picture there goes to some type of roof leak or upper unit leak, causing mold deterioration, more than likely electrical issues there. The third picture is just, again, a maintenance issue where there's been, the walls have been damaged. Water is getting in. We've got a little bit of mold going on there. Some of those types of things. Those are, those are typical situations that our inspectors run across. We've got thousands and thousands of pictures over the years of, of similar types of things. That being said, we do staff this program with three rental inspections. They do all the work and, and as with any inspection program, when you've got different individuals, there can be a challenge with consistency. Although they work together every day, there are different interpretations and sometimes arise, especially with technical types of issues. One inspector may see things a bit differently than another inspector based on experience or knowledge. Those are things that we don't like to see happen, but when they do happen, we want to know about them so that we can address them and, and train to try to avoid those situations in the future. So, next slide, please. Continued photos. This one on the left goes to a little bit of issues. We saw obviously no approved parking surfaces there and no landscape on this property either. This was a successful project that we did get a full parking lot in. Actually, some drainage improvements along with that at the same time. The picture on the right shows obviously some structural deterioration. Probably a balcony that was close to collapse at this point. Luckily, we got in there, required the upgrades to that and got that repaired and, and back in service for the tenants. Next slide, please. The, the age of the property determines the frequency of the property inspections. That's one of the things that's unique to Westminster. We didn't want to spend a lot of time systematically inspecting new multifamily properties where there tend to be much less, many less problems. So, we crafted it to inspect older properties more often. So, properties 20 years older get inspected every two years. Then that, they get inspected every four years. And if, until they're six years old, we don't inspect it unless it's a complaint. We do have the option, if a property is doing very, very well, we can extend those, those frequency of inspections out a year or two. Similarly, if a property continues to have problems, we can shorten that duration. Just a little bit about the inspection process. Staff coordinates with the property owner or property manager the inspection dates. The property manager then provides the tenants with a template or a, a letter based on a template that we give them to notify the tenants of the inspection and the scheduled date so that they know somebody's coming. And then the staff, inspection staff, does enter the property only with the accompaniment of management staff. Staff does not ever go into a, a unit on their own. They will always require management to be with them. If, if entry to a unit is refused by a tenant, which they certainly have the right to do, then the inspector does leave that site and then they've got the, if that situation occurs, they've got the option to request a right-of-entry warrant through the judge to enter that unit at a later date. That doesn't happen very often. I think that we, last count, we were under 5% usage of the right-of-entry warrant process. Next slide, please. The standards contained in the Rental Property Maintenance Code include space and occupancy standards. And some of the things that are included under that would be light and ventilation, sanitation, mechanical issues, like we saw with the water heater in the previous picture, electrical issues, structural issues, as we saw on that, that exterior deck, and exiting, making sure that the exiting system in the building is still usable and maintained. And there is also an occupancy limit on a number of people in a unit. Fire protection standards deal specifically with smoke detectors, CO detectors, open flames, unventilated heating appliances, those kind of things. And then we also regulate the exterior maintenance and landscaping. Parking areas, landscaping areas, I think we saw pictures of that in that earlier slide, and trash and debris. Next slide, please. Licensing, rental licensing and registration. Licensing is required for rental communities. And when, when we speak of rental communities, we're talking about properties containing four or more units under a single ownership on a single property or adjacent properties. Those tend to be larger properties, tend to have more of an impact on the community and the neighborhoods as, as opposed to the smaller properties, the single-family duplexes and even the triplex, which are not part of the systematic program. They are, they are registered instead of licensed. There is a free registration program for that. And those, those properties register so that we have some idea of a responsible party if we do get complaints at some point in the future. Next slide, please. There is fees that go along with the, with the licensing program. Like I mentioned, the single families and duplexes are, are registered and not licensed, and there is no fee for that. But licensed programs for units and above, there are license fees of $50 for the property and then $40 per unit per inspection. So, again, based on the schedule, every four years or every two years, the graph shows the, the cost per month for those units. In 2010, when we put this in, there was a desire to reduce and address income-restricted properties. Income-restricted properties are defined as units, rental units, that where the owner lacks the sole discretion to increase rents due to state or federal law. Programs such as Project-Based Section 8 or Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Programs would, would qualify as income-restricted. Those are, are charged at half the inspection rate of the, of the market-rate properties. In 2022, this year, about 13% of our scheduled inspections are based, are, are going to be of income-restricted properties. The, the property standards apply the same, it's just the, the fee is different. Next slide, please. The program started in 1977 with 15 properties and 6,700 total units. Those consisted mostly of large multifamily projects. As you can see, we've got, the program continues to grow. New units are added every year as, as more multifamily properties become six years old. They enter into the inspection program and they get plugged into the, the four-year schedule at that point. And so, the, the program, numbers in the program are just going to continue to, to rise over the years. So, and with that, that's a short presentation. Next slide, please, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Dave, obviously, you meant 1997 for the start of the program, correct?
I'm sure I did, yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Malo?
Well, that was a great presentation because every time I write down a question, you would answer it on the next slide. The only question I have is, how do people know if they're just doing, if they just have a single-family house or townhome or condo, how do they know to register? Like if they're just, you know, renting out their own house or whatever?
Right. If, if, if they don't know about that, about the program, we do do some proactive outreach. If we see a sign in the yard, if we see an ad in the paper, if we see something on the web, we will reach out to them and just let them know that we do have a program, what it applies, how it applies, and how to go about making application. Again, it's, it's no charge fee for, for those single-family and duplex and triplex units. And then we get them a copy of the code and let them know that there is no systematic inspection for them, but they still need to comply with the regulations.
Does that apply at all to, I, I know we don't regulate these, but the short-term rentals? Like if, do you identify anything like that or even ask them to register?
That's an interesting concept that we'll be working with Eric Otzelberger as, as they put together the short-term program. But yes, I mean, rental is rental and we don't differentiate between the, the current time periods.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor, or Mayor Potem?
Thank you first for bringing this forward so quickly to us because I know this was recently asked. So, first question, I have two questions. And the first one is on the, if the tenant says no, what circumstance would you decide to go get a warrant and push through that if the tenant is obviously happy with the condition and says nothing?
And, and you bring up a good point. A lot of times, we'll talk to that tenant and, and find out, you know, what their issues are with our, with our inspection process. And we'll, we'll flat-ask them. We'll, we'll ask, if a tenant is home when we do an inspection, one of the first things the inspectors do is ask that tenant if they are having any problems with their unit. You know, any leaks or, or any, anything like that that may, may need to be repaired. That's where we start. If a tenant says, I don't want you in here for whatever reason, and we ask them and they say that there are no problems, likely we're not going to try to go back in.
Okay. Great. The other question I have is something that's come up more than just recently. I've had calls in my five years serving around the landscaping stuff. And so, I know that some of that is, you know, ongoing code changes even. But like I don't, what I've, what I don't understand and we didn't get in the presentation is, like what landscaping expectations or rules are you applying to the rental property? And is that something that we're looking at allowing zero-scaping or any of that kind of stuff moving forward? So that if a, a landowner wants to be able to still make it look nice and functional, that we wouldn't require the turf?
The, the regulations in the, in the rental property code right now mirror the landscaping standards for new residential construction. There have been situations where the owner of a property will want to do something that doesn't necessarily comply with the letter of that landscape law. So, what we've done in the past is have them work with our ODP inspectors to get an approved landscape plan that may differ a little bit from, you know, the black and white prescriptive numbers in the code. And then they've got an ODP, landscape ODP that we work against into the future.
Mayor Potem, I'll add also that as our landscaping requirements change for all other residences in the city, we will change them for the. other residences in the city, we will change them for the rental housing portion also. Our intent is not to hold rental housing to some higher standard. Our intent is to make sure there's some degree of landscaping and not just bare dirt on the, on those rental properties.
Sure, that makes sense. And so then I guess the other question that I have is like, so if I'm a homeowner and I want to do something that would be considered a variance on a garage or whatever it is, I would, I believe I would be able to appeal to planning commission, correct? So do rental property owners have those same kind of avenues? And if, you know, if you say, here's what we would like you to do, or they bring forward something that, you know, doesn't meet what staff feels is what we would like to see, are they, do they have, and if they do, are they encouraged or at least let know that that's an avenue for them?
I'm going to ask Dave Horst to respond first, but I might want to add.
As I tried to indicate earlier, we want to work with these property owners and bring their property into compliance. There is an appeal process in the code. It goes to the Building and Fire Code Committee Appeal Group, which is a non-standing committee, but it's the same appeal group that hears building and fire code issues. So that would be the ultimate appeal. But like I said, we would much rather work with the property owner and see if we can come to an agreement on some other type of alternate landscaping design instead of go to a Board of Appeals type of hearing.
And I'll add, Mayor Potem, I think most of you have met Mike Jones, City Employee Mike Jones. He's the supervisor of all of our building inspectors, including the rental housing inspectors. I personally have called upon Mike in recent cases to intercede when there was some objection from the property owner on the interpretation, particularly of landscaping items. And Mike has faithfully worked with the owners to reach an acceptable compromise.
That's great. The last question I have, and then I'll have it on if somebody else has, but like one of the things that's been brought up to me by some property owners in the past is, you know, if you get a complaint and then they want you to fix it, like I would understand if it's like a immediate health and safety kind of thing, that maybe there's more priority to how fast they fix it. But if it's like a landscaping or something like that, that's not necessarily a threat to safety, are we providing good time so that if they come back and say, hey, we just don't have the money for that? I know typically, you know, that's probably less common where it's like the people who that's part of their retirement who own two or three rental house properties compared to multifamily, but that's not always the case. We have some smaller, like four-unit, like for example, those aren't necessarily, you know, wealthy property owners. They may be, that was their retirement investment. So, you know, can you talk to us so we just understand about like how we work with them so that timing-wise they can make those investments?
I'll say again, generally what Dave Horst has said about three times already, our desire is to reach voluntary compliance and we will certainly work. I mean, we gain nothing by just imposing fines. Nobody, nobody has served well for that. Dave Horst, do you want to add something?
Yeah, there's definitely provisions in the code to allow, I think the most by, by the written word is 90 days for compliance. But the inspectors also have the authority and discretion to extend that timeframe, you know, if it's in winter or there's extenuating circumstances, the applicant can also file for an extension. So there are ways to extend that, that time period out if they need more time to, to, you know, secure some funding, those kinds of things. But ultimately, especially with the licensed rental communities, you know, those are looked at as a business operation and some of those, those go to business costs. So that's, they're treated a little bit differently than, than mom and pop renting out grandmother's house type of thing.
Great. I appreciate that and I know it's repetitive, but I think that folks that listen to these, especially if they see something like this particular topic and that's area of interest to them, they're going to listen and I think it's important that they know that they should ask before they get upset when they hear these. Because I'll be honest, more times than not, when I've gotten these kinds of complaints and I've passed it off to staff, I've never heard about it again. So I'm assuming that you're able to come to some sort of agreement with them. So I think it's important that people understand the ability to ask the question and see if, you know, there's some sort of compromise or schedule that they can work on that works out with them. So I appreciate all the information.
Thank you. Besides the 14,000, 13,000 rental units in the program, I would assume that we have, what, 2,000 or 3,000 in that six-year pipeline?
Yes, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that seems about appropriate, yes.
And how many of the registration units do we have? So you know, the single-family and duplex just have to get registered?
As of 2022, we had 1,452.
Okay. And how many of the total number do you think that is? Because a lot of people never get the word.
I don't have a good qualification on that. I would be surprised if it's, if it's much more than 50%.
Gotcha, gotcha. And how many, because I mean, the rental units who are just registered are still subject to all the same standards we hold for everyone else. It's just that they're activated on a complaint basis. So roughly, how many complaints do we get from those?
I don't have that number in front of me, Counselor Baker.
Do you have a mark, is it like 100 or is it 1,400?
No, it would be, it would be probably 200 to 300.
Okay. And is that a higher percentage? So say we have 300 complaints out of 1,500, so we have a 20% of our units are getting complaints. Is that well equivalent to of the 13,000 we inspect on a regular basis? And do we find 20 of them falling down or?
I would say that the registered units are going to, they're turned in as complaints. So there's evidence of something wrong with those units. So when we go out on those units, I think we're finding, you know, violations at a higher percentage than we do in the systematic program.
Okay. So in other words, what you're saying is that with, well, there is an advantage to the systematic program in maintaining a higher standard for these rental units?
I would say that the inspection, the inspections pass more frequently on the licensed properties than they would on a registered property that we inspect.
Okay. I would be really interested to know the number of complaints that we get on the registered properties.
We can get that together for you, Counselor.
Okay, absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor, is that it?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the protocol here, but is it possible that we have someone from the audience ask a question? I know he's had questions before in the past. He's not allowed to.
No, this is our study session.
I do have a question. I guess it's more of a comment. The, to your question, Counselor Baker, I think there is a higher standard with these programs quality-wise. I'm a property owner, I've owned, I own rental properties and I can tell you, sometimes it's, it's a burden, right, to have to comply, but that, those are rare and far and, far, I forgot the phrase. It's rare that it happens because if you maintain your property as you're supposed to, you don't get the, you don't have to continuously have to get burdened with calls and random inspections, etc. But also it does give, it helps everyone. It helps you as a business owner, it helps the tenants live in a quality, a more quality place. And I'd say that this, this policy, I read this policy through and it's much more flexible than lots of cities and states that I've seen. So I think we do have a balance, it seems, just from reading it, it's a pretty balanced, flexible policy from what I've seen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, I sent in a couple of questions prior to tonight and most of them have been answered, but there is one that in regards to the, you mentioned that if there might be multiple inspectors, so one might find something versus another. So how do we, because there was an issue with a resident this weekend where multiple years have passed with multiple inspections where now this year they found something that has not changed, has been consistent for many years in the inspection and now they're supposed to change it. So how do we provide that consistency as far as what we find and what we're inspecting?
The first thing is identifying that there's that issue out there. So if we can figure out what that issue is and it's reported to us, we can, we can learn from that. We can sit down and find out exactly, is it a violation? Is it not a violation? And some of these plumbing systems, mechanical systems, electrical systems can get somewhat technical and we want to make sure that all of our inspectors understand what, what the correct way to do it is and what a violation is and what a violation is not. So that goes to the consistency issue that I mentioned earlier. We don't like to see it happen, but we know with individuals out there that the same eyes don't see the same problems in the same way a lot of times. So, but it's an opportunity for us to get better. So if those things are brought to our attention, we will certainly try to, to address it.
Okay. And if, if it was brought for that there is a violation, is there an appeal-type process that they can push back on and say, wait a minute, this isn't consistent with your such and such? Can you, can you look at this again? Is there an appeal process?
There is a formal appeal process in the code. We hope that we don't have to get there. Hopefully we can work it out and figure out what the compromise is and the best way to address it without going to a formal Board of Appeals. But there is an appeal process built into the code, yes.
Okay, thank you. And in the packet, it noted that rental, our rental program is different than the majority of housing inspection programs. And I don't want to assume here it's ours, the industry standard. How is it different? What makes ours different than others?
The, ours is systematic first and foremost. Most, all rental property or even housing inspection, inspection programs that I know, at least in the Colorado area, are complaint-based. There's no systematic process to those. I think even Boulder, who used to have a systematic program, has changed that over the years. So first of all, that, that makes us different than the majority. It's more in line with some of the things that are being done back east. I wouldn't say it's national because it's taken a while for our, quite honestly, for our properties to, you know, they're not near as old as the properties back east. So that's something that's relatively new to us. So the systematic thing is probably the thing that makes us most unique. The other thing is that we're looking at rental units specifically and not all residential units. And we're looking at them as businesses, so. Those are some nuances that make us a little bit unique as opposed to many other programs, especially in the local area.
Great, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Just, Counselor Miller?
One last question. Do we have a measure that we define success for this program? One, I'm assuming we're tracking how many, you know, units we're evaluating, but do we, how do we know if it's during?
We do, we have in the past, and unfortunately though, over the last couple of years with COVID, we haven't sent inspectors into units other than occasionally on a remote situation on a complaint basis just because of COVID protocols. But we do track the percentage of units that fail as opposed to the number of units that pass on initial inspection. That's, that's something that we try to keep track of. What we've found over the years is there's such a great turnover in property ownership and property management that as much as we struggle to get those numbers down, it's a real battle to try to reduce those percentages to a great extent.
I have one more question.
Counselor Baker?
Do we ever charge people for a visit for, for, for an inspection and don't inspect? Like during COVID, if we weren't inspecting, were we, were we really still charging the $40?
We were charging the $40 and we were doing the exterior inspections of the property and deferring the interior inspection. So they're still scheduled, they just haven't been completed yet. We're just now starting to get back into units to do that. They will get their inspection for their $40.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It is?
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Number two is good to go. Number three is what we're putting. Yep, Andrew was going to do number three. You ready for number two? All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Downing and Mr. McConnell.
Again, for the record, Dave Downing, Community Development's Director. And again, we're here tonight at Counsel's previous request to talk a little bit about land use approvals and options that Counsel might want to consider. With me tonight is John McConnell. I'm sure probably all of you recognize him. He's been with the city for several years, but he has been our acting planning manager since the retirement of Rita McConnell a couple of months ago. So I asked John to give a little bit of background since he's just been a pretty face to you in previous meetings. Or at least a face. Just indulge us, he'll just take a minute to talk a little bit about his background. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dave. Yeah, I appreciate the call. So I've actually been in this role just a couple of weeks now. Rita McConnell, no relation, retired about a month ago. And so I was fortunate enough to step into this role and assume this position. I'll be in this role for the next several months, as I understand it, about nine months maybe until we start the recruitment process for the permanent planning manager position. So I've been with the city for just about seven years now. In that seven years, I've, I've been in the role of principal planner. And so I've managed the current development and development reviews for the last six, seven years since I've been here. And, and so prior to that, I worked for another municipality for 11 years. So in the two municipalities that I worked for in land use regulation, it's been about a total of 18 years. And so I'm real happy to be here in Westminster. I'm a proud Westy resident. My family and I have our own little slice of heaven over there in West Cliff and we enjoy the quality of life. And I'm just really happy that I can, you know, be in this role and contribute to my community in the way that I do professionally. So I want to also say that my team is really committed to service and transparency. We want to do this and all that we do for you. And, and we've put a lot of detail in this memo tonight and I'll just try to start by hitting, hitting just the high level. And before we get into the next slide, I'll go over generally our land use regulatory system in Westminster. For some of you, it's a lot of stuff you've heard before, but there are new members of the Council that might benefit from a little bit of this or maybe even a refresher because it gets kind of complicated, I think, sometimes. So it's good that we're talking about this. Also, I'll go back in, because I think we'll touch on this later on in the presentation. When I started here at the city of Westminster, I was actually one of the, I was the last staff member to manage the growth management service commitment competition. So I do have some experience in that, and I can talk about that if you'd like to talk about those things. Also, obviously, I've, I've had a hand in pretty much every development that's happened in my time here. So I've got some knowledge base there we can talk about as well. So. So first of all, I'd like to start with going over, just at a high level, our land use regulatory system in Westminster. I like to think of it as a pyramid in shape, and, and you can go back to the previous slide. I'm not quite ready for this slide yet. Thank you, though. I like to think of it as pyramid in shape. The foundation of that structure would be our comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plan is unique among municipalities. Ours is a regulatory document, so all developments are required to comply with the comprehensive plan. And so that would include the approvals of preliminary development plans or PDPs, specific plan district or SPDs, and ultimately official development plans, ODPs. And so in our system of PUD, which the majority of our city is zone PUD, we've been using this development tool since the 1970s. And so about two thirds of our city is PUD and the remaining approximately one third is traditional or Euclidean zones, and that's the oldest parts of town. And so in the, in our PUD system, a PDP acts as a unique zoning district for each PUD. Preliminary development plan is very similar to a standard zoning district. It has permitted uses, height, bulk, setbacks, your standard zoning regulations. And, and the PDP can only be approved by the city council. City, city council has the authority and the sole authority to approve, to approve and entitle land use on a property. And across the city, we've got hundreds of PUDs. So there's hundreds of unique zoning districts across our system. The SPD or specific plan district, that functions very much like a zoning district, but it's a zoning district that is, that also includes very specific design regulations. So it's kind of like a traditional zoning district with very specific design standards all wrapped in one. And examples of the, of SPDs in our city, we just have two of those, and that's our station area and that's our downtown Westminster. And finally, building up higher on the pyramid, once you have your comp plan in place and your PDP in place or your SPD, then we go to the official development plans or ODPs. And that's a very detailed site-specific development plan. Some PUDs have multiple ODPs and smaller PUDs might have just one or two. And these things can develop over time. So once you get all that in place, then you get to go to your site construction and your official development plan approvals. I mean, I'm sorry, in your building plans and, and get your site built. So, but these approvals do have durations. They, they do, they can and do expire. And so once a PDP is approved, you have to get the approval of an official development plan within five years or that PDP needs to seek reapproval or reevaluation. The official development plan, if that's secured, it's good for three years. It had, you have to get a building permit within that three-year period or your official development plan may expire and be, and have, be required to be re-reviewed. And so we can move on to the next slide. And so we'll start out by talking about the approval authorities that establish land uses or changes land uses. And all of these are in the purview of the city council. So as stated earlier, the comprehensive plan is, is established by the city council. So the comprehensive plan includes a land use map in each, each property in the city has a land use assigned by the comprehensive plan. And so if the city council decides that retail commercial is appropriate for a specific site, that's what's assigned in the comp plan. And we can't process preliminary development plans or official development plans unless they comply with that land use assignment. So the council also has the authority to zone and rezone. That includes zonings to, zoning to PUD as well as occasionally a, a standard zoning district. There are some, some avenues to do that. And also a specific plan district. City council also has the authority to establish preliminary development plans. And like I said earlier, that's establishing specific land uses for a particular piece of property in our PUD system. So the city council, in compliance with the comprehensive plan, wants to allow offices or retail commercial or single-family residential, if it complies with the comp plan. Those rules are set up in that PDP. And so, and I mentioned also the specific plan districts and specific plan amendments. Those are in the sole jurisdiction of the city council. So after all of those, those entitlements are established on a property, we can go to the next slide. So after those land uses are established and entitled, a few other things can happen. Typically, the next step would be for a property owner to get the approval of an official development plan or one or more of those things for the council-approved PDP. Occasionally, we have amendments to existing PDPs to either add or change a land use and, or modify some, some standard that's greater than 10%. And official development plans are typically under the jurisdiction of the staff or city manager. And anything that's larger in scale, I know some of you have mentioned the, the 10-acre thresholds. That applies to official development plans. So if it's less than 10 acres for a residential property, then that can be approved administratively. Anything greater than that, we would have to refer to the planning commission. And of course, this, there is a provision in, in all of these code sections relative to approval authorities that allow the city manager to elevate any or all ODPs for planning commission or city council review and approval. We've done that on occasion, especially in cases where the city council is considering the approval of a preliminary development plan to establish a use. And, and we understand that the council might be interested in seeing what that development might, is intended to look like. And so there have been occasions where we've elevated those things. One example recently with the former council was the St. Mark Village, PDP, ODP, and comp plan. And then all three of those things we brought all the way to the city council for review and approval. And so, but in, in this presentation tonight, we, we understand that the council is faced with sometimes our, our current council, past council, PDP approvals that haven't reached ODP yet. And we understand the council would like to maybe have a little more oversight on those ODPs for which you didn't have a, a hand in approving the PDP. So there are, there are several PDPs out there that I'm aware of, and I'm prepared to talk about those, that may move an ODP forward with existing council approvals. And I've identified a few of those, and I can outline those if the council's interested in discussing projects in particular. But also, we're prepared to discuss several options that you might consider to, to assume more approval authority over official development plans. Of those, of those options, and again, these are just three ideas that we have that you might consider. You can go to the next slide, please. Of course, there, there are other ways to, to accomplish getting the, the additional approval authorities that, that you would like to see. But we thought we would start with these concepts and see what you think. Ultimately, staff's really interested in better understanding what specific types of projects the city council would like to see. We understand there's a concern over larger multifamily projects, but we don't want to assume that's the only thing that you're concerned about. And so tonight, we'd like to, through this conversation, kind of get a better idea of what kind of general categories that you would like to see, and then we can better advise you on how to get those things to you. The, the, the easy thing to do, and I'll just jump to number three here, is we do have existing codified authority, or the city manager does, to elevate any and all ODPs to you. And so through a directive via resolution, the council can direct the city manager's office to send certain categorical types of ODPs or all ODPs, if you'd like to see that. And so that wouldn't require any code amendment, just really a resolution and directive to the CMO. The first two are kind of suggesting bringing back some things that we used to have, specifically the residential service commitment competition. The city removed that in 2018, early 2018. And, and as, as we saw a reduction of, of total service commitments being consumed over the last several years. And that probably has a lot to do with our state of build-out and, and the pace of growth and development associated with that. But as we saw that waning, our, our leadership decided that it may be time to eliminate the competition so that development can move a little more quickly, I think. So the former process, some of you are very familiar with it. I think Mayor McNally, Mayor Protem Demai, at least you two I know are around when we were implementing the service commitment competition. And that was an annual competition. The council would establish a certain number of water taps or service commitments for each residential category. And then that would be the upper limit of what could be allocated in that year. And then the applicants, developers that were interested, they would throw out plans for our consideration and commit to a point system and potentially be awarded those service commitments. And so that took place again on an annual basis. We could reinstitute that, just like it was. Or we could create a more streamlined version of it that maybe didn't happen on an annual basis, but could be just ongoing throughout the year on a first come, first served basis. The, the, the advantage that I see having administered that and not administered that after, after it was removed was, I think, without the competition, the city council lost the ability to kind of see what's coming and to give sort of a pre-approval, because that's kind of what, what the service commitment competition did. And so if there was a project that the city council didn't think was, was good enough for the community, city council would have the option to not issue the service commitments and not allow that project to go forward. And so there is a lot of value in kind of seeing what was, what was coming before it got into the development review pipeline. And so we, we could come up with a, with a, a replica of that or a more streamlined version of that if you were interested in that as well. Another option is very similar, just the number two up there. We could establish a concept review that would have really accomplished the same thing without the awarding of service commitments. But it would be more like a preliminary review. We get the thumbs up, we move the project forward. And if, if you weren't happy with the project for any reason, then, then it wouldn't enter into the full development review.
I think that's what Broomfield does. In talking with their mayor, and she said it just really helps you all so that, and the developers, so that they don't get so far down the line, spending so much money and find out they may not have the support of council and have to change anyway. So that does a lot, she said. And so she sent me all this stuff to understand what they do, and that looks good.
I'm somewhat familiar with, with that. I wasn't even aware they did that until I got a referral recently for development in Broomfield. And I started reading through all the comments, and I noticed that counselors were making comments. I was like, hmm, that's interesting. I, I wasn't even aware of that. So it's a, it's a, it's a good option, I think, if, if you're interested in going that direction. But however, you know, number three on the list would be the, probably the quickest solution to getting more official development plans before you. And, but I think it would be worthwhile discussion to understand kind of, are there broad categories that you would like to see? ODPs can be for new buildings, new constructions, brand-new developments, or they could be for additions or facade renovations. And I, I'm pretty sure you would want to see everything like, that, that we review. So anyway, any, any input or advice we can get from you on that would be super helpful. You did a while ago.
I saw his hand, and then I thought he was pointing his finger. I don't know.
You're watching you.
You go, then I'll.
No, I appreciate this. And, and I was looking especially towards that option, number two, that, that you threw out as far as that concept review, and that Broomfield and Thornton engages in a hybrid process of that. I, I do have some concern on, you know, reviewing ODPs that are already in the pipeline at this point, because I, I want to have some oversight. I want to know what's going on, which will be nice on, on the front end on option two, because we can see them come in. I don't want to have someone get to the point of an ODP and put in, in some case, millions of dollars and then have council come back on it. So I'm concerned about us catching it at that point, although right now we may be stuck between two different spots. So that's my concerns.
First, no, I do not want to see everything. Just to be clear about that. I think for me, what brought this up is prominent. And so I know that there were some changes when it was very, very first on council, but I thought it was around more of a, some sort of tax incentive or something that they asked for. And I don't really remember honestly what happened with it, because it's been some years ago. But I was kind of blindsided when I, I got some heated feedback about what was going on over there. And so for me, that's what kind of brought this up, because I, to be frank, was blindsided. And I'm like, I, I really don't know. I don't know when it was approved, you know? But obviously, it started to get built while I was on council. So that's a bad place to be in, I think, for this body. So I think you've laid out some good options. I'm, I'm open to, I think the, the second one sounds interesting, because I do remember when you were during, the service commitments part of the, the complaint was that they had to wait all year long, and so they're putting all this work into it. And then potentially they get it or they don't get it. So streamlining it makes a lot of sense to me. So, you know, I'm open to what the rest of the body says, but I think you have three good options, and I appreciate it.
Councilor DeMello?
Definitely not interested in the beauty pageant being back, as the Mark Devall first called it, and still call it. The, the concept review, I would like to understand it a little bit better. I also don't want to see everything, because you know I'd comment on it. And I don't want to be commenting, like, and I don't think council.
You do that during the day. At least you have self-awareness.
I, yeah. So, but I don't think that's the place for, when I hear that council's commenting on concept, aside from big picture, yay or nay kind of things, or, you know, maybe there are some really specific criteria upon which council can be commenting on these, right? Give us severe guardrails. And then also, if it's at a concept level phase, does council really have the context from the community? In terms of, you know, like, so again, those are just, has it gone through any public outreach? This is just me just trying to understand what Broomfield and Thornton are doing and how council gets that context of a broader, any, any issues that are outstanding. And then, of course, the number of them, right? So how do we focus in on how many concepts are coming in? Do some of them just go on consent and then others get pulled out? With the third concept, again, I think, just again, having an understanding of what ODPs are coming and why. So, and again, if we're, I, I don't know if it's better to identify what PDPs are approved and just identifying for us, doing a little bit of backtracking to say, you know, if it's multifamily and it's of a certain category, yeah, we are concerned about these. So let's look at the ODP. Yeah, we are concerned about these, so let's look at the O D Ps. And then kind of as P D Ps come, we can go through that process of saying, is this something you want to see in O D P form or not? Because I'm just concerned it's going to take up more time. You know, just how do we, how are we judicious about our time on council? Seeing what is important as, you know, if it's context, if it's, you know, transitions, if it's. Yeah, anyway.
So if I can respond to to some of that. The I don't have any of this fleshed out for you. I really wanted to to get some direction on your interests. If we're interested in the concept plan, we can dig in on that, come up with a good solution and bring it back to you. Again, number three is the easy one. We could just implement whatever you whatever you decide. And it sounds like we're not really interested in number one as much as number two.
I would say I'm not interested in any of them. But what, however, there are things that are of concern, like transition of multifamily to. So some of that can be tackled in a comp plan. It can be tackled in design guidelines or standards. So, you know, is this the right thing to if we can identify what are the concerns and figure out the right tool to modify?
That sounds good. And and two, I'll 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 make note of. We we sent out a info only memo on the 18th on the same subject. But I included a list of projects that are kind of in the pipeline as a snapshot, and it was dated 4/11. So I thought it was a good, a good sort of listing of of projects to give you a flavor of what's in the pipeline, what kinds of things we routinely deal with and 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 who approves those things. So if if you have some time, I would encourage you to go back and look at that as well. That kind of gives you a flavor of what what to expect that could help shape this decision somewhat. And also, if you're, again, I did, I did put together kind of a short summary of, I would call them sleeper projects, that's my own term, projects that have P D P entitlements that haven't gone to O D P, but they can go to O D P. And and they can go administratively, and some of these may be of concern to you. And so I I can go through those if you would like to or share what I put together with you outside of the meeting, if if you were interested in receiving it that way as well.
When you have these smaller pieces, like the one at the Promenade, you don't have the same, because they didn't go through planning commission or public hearing or whatnot. So you don't have to let any of the people that live around it know that it's coming, correct? Because we receive nothing.
Whenever whenever we process an official development plan, specifically those that would go to some kind of public hearing, we require that applicant to do a neighborhood meeting. And you've probably seen, we we do these things virtually now since since COVID started, and we and we record and put them on the website. If it is truly just an administrative approval that doesn't go to public hearing, smaller projects, we require them to do a neighborhood mailer of that 500 feet and 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 not necessarily do the meeting. If we get a lot of concern and response out of that mailing, then we'll ask that that applicant to have a meeting. But generally, we push them directly into the meeting if it is going to go to a public hearing. One thing you might have noticed too recently, I've made a an effort to try to make council aware of projects that are recently approved or or something that you might get questions about in the community. And we put those in those notes that the CMO sends you. And so we're going to continue to do that as well.
May I ask, John, if if this would be helpful? Could you take a couple of minutes and walk through what what did happen on that on that one particular project? It's been referenced a number of times tonight and and then prior to tonight as well. Do you are you able to do that for us, just walk through?
I'd give you a real high level.
That's all I think, just just to understand, how did it get where it got to? And because that may inform.
Tires Sheridan Green has no clue yet what's going in there. And I'm asked daily, at least by five people that walk by the house, do you know what's happening with that big crane? That's the reason I know nobody got any kind of notice. I had to go to this young man and say, what in the heck are you doing in my backyard?
We we can get all that information to you, I understand.
Throwing stuff at your butt.
We only have like a 300 foot or 500.
It's a 500 foot.
Yeah.
So the Westin got it.
Right, so you wouldn't have, if it's across, right, Westminster Boulevard.
Yeah, they had no, they had no residents. That's my point.
Yeah.
And yet it's impacting an entire neighborhood.
The that we're talking about is the Avalon Bay Apartments. The it goes back to as far back as 2015. There was there was a comp plan amendment that went from mixed use center to mixed use in a part of the Promenade. Along that same time, there was a P D P amendment that established some additional multifamily land uses. And and this is, this is not common, but at that time, the the council gave it a 10 year vesting instead of the typical five year P D P vesting. And so.
What year was that?
This was 2015.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so in addition to the one that's going vertical now, this is what I wanted to make the council aware of. There there are other multifamily units that that can move forward on that site based on that 2015 approval. Understanding the council's concerns now, we could easily push those future O D Ps to the council for your review and approval, if if you if you direct us to do that.
Well, we all read about how we found out about the second piece that went north of Sync was through the newspaper saying that a developer purchased these 10 acres and what was going to go there. So that's how we're learning about things in the city.
Well, the the circle point, let's see, the that most recent one, that that was a P D P amendment in 2020. That was right when COVID started. I think that was actually the first virtual public hearing that we had with the former council. That P D P amendment established that that land use. And then we did approve the O O D P administratively, but the we had the applicant show that to the council at the time. So the council would understand what was coming. So all that was at that virtual public hearing, but it was the very first virtual public hearing we had.
My point, the community that lives around any of these places has no clue. But they're impacted by it.
Yes, that that would have.
We have the apartments that got a $4 million incentive. We have all of the apartments that are in sync. We now have the new ones from Texas. And if I were snooze, I would be livid having 312 apartments going in, because there's not parking now for them in Ziggy's. There is no parking.
There's integrated parking in that new unit though, correct?
Yes, so Avalon Bay would include full parking for its residents, and they have a they have a portion of the deck that's reserved for public parking for the businesses around it too. But but I I agree with you, Mayor. They the that's why I wanted to make sure that I advise you of all those sort of sleeper projects that are out there. These are projects that the past councils have approved the entitlements for. And and they could move move forward administratively, and and it would be a similar situation to what you're describing.
We felt we wanted to be very, very clear on this point. Now, with that, we're in discussions with you about potentially changing these administrative approvals and or how city council makes its approvals, that anything already in the pipeline, we did not want to blindside, have you blindsided in five months when something else starts to get constructed and you didn't see it as a council, even though you may have changed the authorities, because it's already in the pipeline. So we want to make sure as part of this discussion that it can be, it can be sent after the meeting as well, just to be very clear what the project listings are that are already in the pipeline and what they could end up doing over the next little while.
Can we be clear about just what the concerns are from the community? So that we, when those projects are brought, that A, the right projects are brought that actually, you know, the community cares about, and B, that those things that, like, it's probably traffic and in some cases, height and, you know, relationship to existing development, those things are evaluated and it, you know, so that if council's looking at them, say, oh, okay, we understand it would have this type of impact, or this is how it's mitigating it, or something. So that it's not just, because if we're just looking at it without.
Just the foot traffic and and the piece of property that at as you turn right west off of Westminster Boulevard to go to Fat Cats or Dave and Buster's, there's property there that should have been created a dog park. Because, number one, between all the poop that's left out there, and some people do put it in a bag, but tie it not and expect their mother, I guess, to come by and pick it up, because it's still on the ground. It it is a problem. And these animals living in all of these apartments, there are now going to be four big sets of apartments. Those animals have no place to run right there. And the dog park, when you're putting that many apartments together, should have some place. Number one, they could socialize and get to know one another. But number two, those animals need a place to run. And there is no place, and nobody's thought of that. That's a huge issue for all the apartments that have been built.
And there's that big old easement that goes through for the Excel energy that you can't build anything on.
So so that property of just to the east of Fat Cats, that's a city owned property. And I haven't seen any movement on that recently. But in the last couple of years, I know Habitat Housing was interested in in buying that from the city and and building some for sale affordable housing units. But I think I think the the real concern too in that area is the parking lot that's just to between Fat Cats and the AMC, as well as the parking lot that's right adjacent to that in front of Dave and Buster's. Those two planning areas would allow multifamily to to move forward through that 2015 entitlement. And and again, to to Mr. Andrew's point, we we want to make sure that you're aware of these. Again, I call them sleepers, because they just haven't awakened yet. And so that we can discuss a way of how a a manner in which you'd like to address those things, or maybe before they advance.
My question is, is somebody insane? Craziness. Councilor Baker.
Okay, I saw your list, and that was really helpful. But a third, between a third and a half seemed to be like commercial O D Ps.
I don't know the percentage, but yes, a large number are commercial, yes.
Okay. And I don't think we're really having the heartburn over the commercial O D Ps, are we? That's not where my complaints are coming from. Mike, go ahead.
I think it's specifically the Mayor Protem's point, where we didn't know that there was a condition on this property. And I think that sparked the discussion as far as, okay, well, what else are we not seeing? What else are we missing? And so I think that's where it came to a head today, as far as, okay, now what? And so that's where I feel like, because on my timeline, this is the first time I'm hearing this.
Yeah, and so and and to that point, so when was circle point? Because I'm trying to remember, I think the three of us were all part of that. And I'm trying, I don't remember how we voted, I'm trying to find the minutes.
I think it was approved under the condition that it would come back, because we.
To that to that point, I remember talking about any of this and that. And I mean, so that, like, if if we, my concern is, is that we're doing things in a silo that we don't know these other things are happening. And so if I'm going to look at like a whole picture of balancing resources, parks, whether it be dog park or whatever, and, you know, we're saying, okay, circle point, this sounds great. And then we find out that former council gave this extended, you're approved to do this for X amount of years. And I have no idea that that's going to be administratively built. You know, we're not, we're not making good decisions, in my opinion. And so that's that's my concern. And then so, I mean, to some extent, yeah, I'm not really worried about commercials. But at the same time, I don't know what I don't know. So if there's some other thing that was done that, you know, you you can administratively approve something that's going to have big impact on on the community as far as resources, being whatever they are, that are typical things that we would look at under criteria of a a normal planning process for something that's big enough to come to us, you know, that I think it needs to be looked at. Because we need to make sure that, you know, we understand how it impacts the whole ecosystem of Westminster, if that makes sense. So that's my bigger concern. I mean, specifically the Promenade stuff, I mean, it was all the things that people are concerned about with any of the planning that that are development we hear, traffic, water, you know, all the typical things that you hear. I mean, I heard all of them on that one. I got, there was a thread on Facebook that originally brought this to my attention. For a couple of us, at least, I know I was tagged in it, and there were, and there, you know, people just asking questions. I'm like, I have no idea, I'm going to have to find out, because, you know. But I mean, they're all valid questions, because those are all things that we're going to look at in a normal process if it comes for us. So as well as, the community is going to want to say that, you know, come and ask questions. And those oftentimes are going to spur our our thought process and make us think through it. So.
But in these processes, the public's.
Yeah, and I I so I don't know what the right right size is. I know on our time on council, or since you guys, specifically since Councilor Seymour and Emmons have come on board, they very much pushed to expand to your earlier point, like how far our reach is. Because because that's a great example of where somewhere where that's a big miss in my mind. Because and I don't think it's, you know, it's not through any kind of malice, it's just a miss in the way that we're doing it. So, you know, I think those are learning moments that we got to really figure that out. Because if that whole neighborhood over there doesn't know what's going in, that's that's a problem, because that's going to impact their life. You know, negatively or positively. And I'm sure there's a variety of opinions over that that would like to be able to come and speak and say, yeah, I love this, or no, I hate this. But we just, I think that it's our duty to give those opportunities in in something like this. So I don't know if it's a unit count we want to look at or or what it is, but that's a substantial amount of units that can can go into that area.
What do you need? And there's not an affordable one in the bunch. They're running 3,000 something to whatever. So.
Yes.
So there was no consideration of anything affordable there, never.
So my vote would be for number two. Yeah, I think that's, and it sounds like it's just a, it's a simple communication problem, probably. If you communicate more on number three, just what's existing in some way to council, so we can be aware as to what's going next and what's happening. But really, I think number two, earlier in the process, is where council should live theoretically. You know, this is an example of a market driven process. We talk about market driven processes a lot. This is what we're trying to do now is kind of control a little bit. But this is what you get with the market driven process, right? I would be in favor for sure of number two, mainly because I would like to see more units that are affordable way early and influence the the developers, the the design and see and see what they're planning. Because we do have these $3,000 units popping up that don't help anyone. Not anyone that I, not my, not my constituents, right? People need help and people need to have housing and to get them into housing, but they need to have units that are affordable. So I would like to definitely be involved in the development concept to see what that developer is planning early on to make sure that we have units that are affordable. That's really my main concern here.
And to the $3,000 apartments or leasing, that's the one that the city gave $4 million to.
On the regarding when the development concept comes. On the, regarding when the development concept comes in, obviously you're gonna have to flesh out what that is, if we're gonna have any public input for that, whether or not we're going to have the information that is actually going to help us understand if there are traffic impacts, that kind of thing. Because I don't know at what level, you know, we actually have anybody do a transportation impact analysis. And then, you know, for Counselor Azadi's desire to see whether or not there's affordability wrapped in, has that boat already sailed at the time, concepts coming in because that's after a PDP has come through? I don't know. But that's a question to be answered is, at what point, right? Is this the right time to get the concerns that we have? Whether it's open space, traffic, parking, et cetera, to be resolved? Is that coming in at the concept plan time? Affordability, right? So again, I'm just going back to emphasizing, find the right tool to handle the concerns that we have. And I'll just put a plug for, you know, back in California, we did environmental impact reports for all, for all projects. It was kind of a pain, but the community understood what was happening with the development. And you were able to identify traffic impacts and other impact, environmental impacts, and then mitigate for those. So in my perfect world, we'd be doing something that I'd like that. Without that though, find the right time.
Question in, for, for everyone, in the concept of a concept review, we would probably still want to know what categories you would like to, to see. Would it be just residential projects? Would it be multifamily or attached only residential projects? Or would you like to see detached housing?
I mean, even single family residential projects have been.
Well, and even when you start infilling, because we're so close to build out, that infill is gonna make a difference because you've really got to look at that 30,000 feet, see what's all around and what's missing and, and try to identify what, if you don't want people out on the streets going far, but those that can walk and whatnot have amenities right there. I mean, that's how the promenade was sold to all of us. And it has been that way up to this point. That you have to look at that whole picture as things come and go. And then there's some redevelopment that needs to happen, what should be there. And so I, I think that's a critical piece.
And so, like even that site at the northwest corner of Sheridan and 104th, where they wanted to put a gas station in. You know, a corner like that where, you know, there are some commercial projects that, that pain me to think about. Like, you know, as we're just finishing out build out, to be thinking of uses that are compatible. So, hmm.
Well, I mean, this is, this is all really important stuff. And I know that we're gonna touch on a lot of this in the comp plan discussions and, and the context of that. Housing is gonna be important for us to get a, get a read on. We, we have a how, an older housing needs assessment, but it doesn't provide a specific policy direction on housing, affordable housing. My concern is the same as yours with really just over 2% of land left to develop. We have very little to work with to get the things that we need for our future. And so if we determine that we need a certain number of affordable housing units, now's the time to kind of decide where those things should go and, and how much and, and, you know, and where. So I, there was, there's an attachment and this is for the comp plan study, but I thought I'd mention this because I think this particular attachment, number seven, is relevant to what we're talking about today. But it's a, it's basically a vacant land and project status map that we put together. And if you really look at this, this is super informative and it really gives you a, a nice perspective as to which lands are left to be developed, what their land use definitions are. And then you can get an idea of, of what the potential would be for future development on those properties. And so I, I do believe now's the time to be discussing these things. And, and of course, we'll do that in the context of the comp plan as well. But we, we will want to get particular input on, on housing policy especially because there's just so little left to work with at this point.
Mayor Protam and Baker?
Along the terms of affordability, what I would like to see is to make, if you, I mean, the Colorado market is a lot of outside of Westminster's control. But, you know, the market is, part of the reason it's unaffordable is because there's just no stock. So I mean, if we're looking at what's left to build, like I want people to be able to be owners in Westminster and be vested in Westminster. So like, what are we doing for single family? Like I know we were able to luckily get some condo project inside of the new downtown. Like what are we doing in these little areas that by all means are the same kind of walkability to a lot of amenities? But I mean, are they gonna do any townhomes over there? I mean, are they gonna do any kind of condos? Are we pushing for that? I mean, because at the end of the day, that's where the market's really falling apart in Colorado in a lot of ways is what happened with the builder feedbacks. And so people can't get into that entry level like they used to and then be able to build some equity and sell it and move up. So like for our little piece of the pie, that's what I'd like to see in the comp plan, that we're, we're doing what we can with what's left to do some owner occupancy. And I think that needs to be the mix of different options. Whether you want to call them affordable or not, in today's market and standard, you know, that's, you know, a very different number than it was 10 years ago. We, you know, we need to realize.
Counselor Baker?
Oh, yeah, I think for now we should go with number three. We may want to work toward number two, but go with number three now. But I think it's also really important to talk about the sleepers and make the sleepers widely published.
So, and I'm happy to speak to this, not a huge list and, and some of these you, you'll recognize. But I, I'm happy to walk through them very quickly if that's what the council would like.
Okay, if you could just print them up and send them to.
I can do that.
Yeah, resend them.
And, and I think no matter, if I could offer this, no matter what we do moving forward, increased communication on projects in the pipeline, I think would be very helpful. And we could consider or offer potentially like, like, like we're doing with the workforce, uh, status of the workforce and the organizational health, we do that monthly. I, I think we could institute something monthly for you on development and you, it could include a map like that and include a table and you can track what's, what's in the pipeline, what's the status. We can talk about what, what, what it is, when it is, and its status at a, at a minimum. And then we can work on whatever other direction you give us this evening to, to change your tools at your disposal to address those.
I had to sign a, one of our MyLars, but in doing that, I had to go through a bunch of pages and I saw something that I knew I had commented on during the review process and yet it was still there. So, so yeah, I mean, it made me feel like, oh, it didn't matter that we spoke up about this, it's still sitting there. So it is critical. Or, or you'll, we'll be giving no votes. I mean, that's our only other choice.
For the concept, so much to like the mayor's ask is that the concept review, what I would like to see specifically is that whatever we bring up in the PDP slash ODP process, and I'm specifically thinking about Uplands, is that we specifically said no five stories. And so I want to confirm in this process, in this concept review, that there's not going to be a five story building. So that's, so whatever we have discussed as a council, as a body, I think is important, comes back to us and confirms yea or nay on whether or not it's being developed, although that concept is being developed.
With the Uplands specifically, you know, one of your conditions was that all ODPs would get your review and approval. So every.
It was just an example, right? If something comes, if something on the dais comes up that we're actually being old or updated, that, that that's what's happening.
And that would be an in the pipeline project, right?
If I.
No.
I'm sorry, I'm not tracking.
Not with Uplands yet, no.
We'll see all those ODPs, right?
No, no, but we've seen the PDP.
Is, is Uplands in the pipeline? Is it, is it a sleeper?
Oh, Uplands, and we, we gave you a status update on that through an info only memo recently. Not a lot's changed since that, that memo. Uh, we do have two projects that are trying to move forward. Uh, we had, we had a pre-app for both of their proposed multifamily affordable housing projects. And so one of them wasn't quite comp plan or PDP compliant, so it's not moving forward. Uh, the other one is from the St. Charles Town Company. We're in the pre-app review process for that right now. Uh, more or less an internal concept review. And, and that one will probably move forward and you'll see that in the next nine months or so.
Okay. But I mean, all of Uplands is in the pipeline, all of Uplands is the sleeper, right?
Well, I, I, I wouldn't characterize it in my sleeper terminology because that's something this council did approve. Uh, you know that there are going to be future ODPs coming. We don't know exactly when they're coming, but we, we do know that everyone will bring to you. That when I refer to the sleepers, I'm, I'm thinking more.
You're talking about previous councils have approved the PDP.
And you're not aware of it or you're, yeah.
And under current rules, you might. Never be made aware of it with the ODP with the administrative. But are we gonna go to three? Is that what we decided for now?
Yeah, and then back up into two eventually.
Then back up into two eventually.
These are what we said?
I remember having a vote on that. A poll.
How many you want, three?
We would back up to two, but definitely start with three.
Start with some place.
Whatever, you've heard our concerns, like two or three, if we have to, you know.
So what, what I'm hearing is three, but I do need some detail on what types of projects that you want to see.
You hear three until we can get to two.
Right. Yes, but under number three, do you just want to see residential projects elevated? Or is it a certain type of residential or is it what?
I, well, I think it'd be the multifamily.
Multifamily.
That's, that seems to drive the biggest concern.
Does, although we have plenty of concern from the community regarding non multifamily as well.
That is small enough though, that it wouldn't come back to council?
Less than 10 acres.
I, I don't, I don't think that there's anything that's smaller.
We've seen, you know, the big ones, yes.
Well, single family is gonna be.
Keep in mind that 10 acre threshold applies to ODPs and ODPs are in the jurisdiction of the planning commission. So unless the city manager elevated an ODP to the city council under the current code, you wouldn't see an ODP at all.
Well, that's what we want to do though, we want them all elevated, don't we?
Every one of them.
I mean, we don't want to see commercial development.
Only if it's a gas station, eh?
There were people who.
Chances are you'll see something like that.
I mean, who's gonna impact for residents, maybe?
Okay, we better see a bunch of them then. I don't know what the breakup would be.
It can be a learning process.
Yeah.
Until we say stop.
Until we say stop. Like the first meeting.
Well, you know, and, and this is why I referenced this map. And again, I encourage you to, to look at it. There's not a lot out there that can happen outside of the sleeper projects that I'm referring to. And there's only a, a very few of those. Uh, everything else would potentially require a comp plan amendment or a PDP amendment to allow a land use. But the sleeper projects, starting to sound like a terrible word now, but the sleeper projects are just those that are entitled by a previous council that could go to ODP and there's a handful.
So speaking of sleeper, we just received an email regarding Cara Estates. And I think you were on it.
Yes.
I mean, what is, so that type of projects? I mean, I'm not quite understanding the whole, right? This is a sleeper project, this was new, it was kind of, felt like it was a little blindsiding.
Well, so, so what's happening with Cara Estates, and I'll be very general, I, and I could share my correspondence with the, with the resident. Uh, she asked a lot of detailed questions. Uh, she has been involved with the process since the council approved the PDP and the, and the ODP. And so she's concerned over minor, minor changes to the development plan. And those were changes that fell within these very small, less than 10% thresholds. And so the staff is approving those minor amendments. This is a, a custom home subdivision, uh, not affordable at all, they're a million dollar homes there. And, and with any custom subdivision, they're making minor tweaks to things. And so there's a lot of detail in the responses that I provided the, this concerned citizen. And I can share those with you through the city manager's office.
Well, I think that they moved the house 20 feet closer to hers, didn't they?
There was a one lot where they didn't change the setback technically, but they changed which lot line the established setback applies to. So there are some really oddly shaped lots.
Moved the lot closer to hers.
Which, which it does, which it does. And the, she was, like I said, very, very involved in the review process all the way through public hearing. The neighborhood successfully negotiated with the developer at the time of approval for just one story houses along that northern property line. And there's also a, a significant 30 foot wide easement there for drainage and whatnot that separates the back lot.
In a berm.
In a, in a berm, I believe, yeah. So, so anyway, but, but this particular residence has, has some complaints about some of the minor changes that have happened since then.
Whereabouts is that one at?
Cara Estates, 144th and La Pan.
Yep, that's what I'm thinking of. Thank you.
A really nice, nice neighborhood. All the neighborhoods around there.
Can you afford a really?
No, I cannot.
Could afford the house I have now.
I know, me neither. Question, just a question, John, when you bring back the proposal for, you know, two or three or three to two, could you give us an idea of how many we might see? Like our, our impact to, you know?
Yes. Um, again, it'd be helpful to solidly land on a, a category of things that you would like to see in a concept review. I know you made it clear you don't want to see everything.
So for me, it's, it's the multifamily that falls under the purview because I think that that's where there's the biggest concern. I, you know, in my mind, we could figure out as you work into two, what things make sense. And I'm, until you make some recommendations that you think meets what you've heard from this council. And I think that would make sense to have you do that. But the immediate concern for me is the multifamily that's under that, yeah.
Well, hearing that we have land for sale and habitats looking at putting housing there, that is not an area for single family dwellings. I mean, that, the traffic, the, the entertainment area, all of the apartments, there is no way on God's green earth that a subdivision or a mini, anything should go there. That's the reason I suggested a dog park.
They do townhomes, all right.
Yes, this, again, I don't know if this will ever move forward. Uh, they were proposing some townhomes, I don't remember the exact number on that site. That one actually isn't entitled for residential land uses. So that would actually be a PDP amendment that would come before the, the council, regardless of, you know, where, where we land today.
I would just say, you know, with the ODPs, as you bring them in, like, because ODPs are coming in at a point, right? When they're kind of super fleshed out. And, and the fact that they already are entitled through PDPs, just be helpful to understand, like, what could we comment on? Or like, what power would we have?
I think you've identified a really tricky aspect of this. They do have a zoning int. They do have a zoning entitlement. So in other words, a, a previous council said you can build apartments here. They can be however high or number of stories, uh, specified dwelling unit density and just typical zoning standards setbacks and, and lot coverage and all that. You know, our job collectively, whether it's just staff or, or the elected officials is to make sure that they comply with all the rules that, that are set up through the design standards and the city code and all of that. So I, I don't know that I can answer your question. Maybe that's more of a, of a question from Mr. Frankel here. What do you review for a project that already has its basic zoning entitlements? I, I will say they're, they're under the PDP approval provisions in the code. The council can initiate a PDP or a PDP amendment. Technically, the council can change a previous council's decision. That's, I think Mr. Frankel may want to comment on.
Well, I think there's also ODP approval criteria to take into consideration.
Yes.
So if there was an ODP coming before council, you look to the code and see what the criteria are for consideration on their ODP.
Yeah, there's.
But aren't we limited? But like if we wanted to do a PDP amendment, we're limited to whether or not it's vested, it's development, like.
I, I think that's the tricky part. The code allows the council to amend a PDP or adopt a PDP, uh, initiated by the council. But, you know, you, you'd be dealing with a property owner that has a, a vested right by a previous council. I'm not saying that's a, the way to go. It is.
So when we say seeing it, well, so what we're saying, we want to see these multifamily ODPs. It's really more, more likely it's simply just being aware that it's happening. You don't really have any power to say to cancel it unless it's.
Yeah, we should know it has to meet the criteria.
Yeah, we probably should be sure everyone's clear on this question because the city manager's authority to send ODPs up to city council isn't just to notify city council that this is. This is a public process, right? So there's going to be notice and opportunity to be heard for both the applicant and stakeholders that are impacted by the proposals, so neighborhood groups, anyone who wants to be heard. And it would mean a public hearing on city council's agenda. Evidence would be presented upon which city council would then apply the criteria and issue a decision. So, so it's more than just notification to city council of this.
It's approval authority.
You're going to have to consider that request for the ODP.
But to say no to it, we, we require us to adhere to those criteria. We can't just say no because we don't like multifamilies. We apply the criteria, right?
Yeah, and you think, yeah.
And it's all right, the staff will prepare an agenda memo. We will have reviewed the project. Uh, we'll tell you to the degree that they comply with our standards and guidelines and, and everything that's applicable there. Uh, you've probably noticed through the Uplands process and other processes that, um, we do have minimum design standards and according to our code, residential developments must meet. Uh, the staff's not authorized to deviate from those minimum standards. And so they have to request exceptions from the city council. And so there's, there's that that happens too.
And the other aspect of just, uh, the planning commission's role in this process. So, John, your chart talks about the planning commission having approval authority over ODPs. If the city manager is going to send ODPs to city council, where do you see the planning commission?
Recommending.
Still be able to hear it before council and they'll make a recommendation to council. So you'll have that information to take into consideration.
I just want to be clear, I'm not against multifamily. My first residence in the city that I paid for on my own was multifamily, not particularly nice area either. Though, I mean, it's just a matter of can we accommodate it? Does it fit, does it fit the mix of what the city needs? I mean, there's a time when people need apartments. There's a time people need condos, even though we can't seem to build those in Colorado. But, you know, it's, it's, it's all about how it's our resources and what we have left to develop in the city. To your earlier point of, you know, 2% left. I think we need to be judicious how we use that 2%.
And I don't know with some of our weird shaped things that we have left. I've heard people talk about, there's other things to look at, but nobody has brought those forward. We have tiny homes. We have all sorts of different things we see on the market. I've even seen a cool, um, city use a parking garage and use containers that turned into beautiful homes, but they were affordable. And so, and you created community because you were each on a level of the parking garage. Anyway, I don't see any of that creativity here. I don't know what choices we have. And that's what we need before we start dictating anything.
Are we, so unclear. We're going with number three for multifamily? That's the direction and then we're going to get recommendations.
Recommendations for number two.
We can bring number three, um, for multifamily back in, uh, right away. And, and then the team will start working on toward number two. And, and probably, I would imagine we come to a point where we might even, uh, I guess a study session to, to work through what we've worked up. And then you can, we can test it out. You can, you can try it on and we can, we can go with that. I would recommend, um, or suggest that, um, for, for the number three augmentation, that we bring back a draft resolution for you to instruct me to, uh, for each ODP on a multifamily project to bring that forward to you right now.
No matter what, what size of.
And that will be clear. And I think that will be good government because then it's not us having a discussion now and then eight months later, someone not quite remembering what was decided this, this way. You would act on it. You would have the opportunity to vote in public on it. Now you would give me very clear instructions that we would then act on. And I would, uh, suggest that perhaps we even put a timeline on it as a trial. You could do it for a year or 18 months. And then we reevaluate that, uh, when we get there because you may find the public hearing load, uh, different than what it is today. Or it may not be much of an impact at all. There may be two projects and you were happy to see them, um, right? And so we can, we can put a timestamp on it, um, I think.
And in the meantime, working towards two. Because what that, what's good about that is like when we had the Uplands and we said nothing over three stories. But we said no to the five stories. They know that immediately before they spend another dime with their, their concepts.
We're doing residential ODP, multifamily residential.
And we're also going to get a list of the sleepers reset out. Okay, and.
I haven't sent it previously. I'll, I'll send it though.
And the vacant land is on.
Yeah, attachment number seven on the comp plan.
I'll suggest that we send both of those to you together. So you'll have that, uh, well extricated from the, uh, comp plan as an attachment sent to you separately, accompanied by this list of projects that are already in pipeline. You get those two items together, um, and then you can contemplate those as we bring back a resolution for you.
And our really council has put in the Uplands and separate gardens into the pipeline, into the entitlement pipeline.
Yes. Those are, yes, correct. Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Thank you for adjusting tonight's, uh, agenda.
It's a good thing we did because it's 10:24, yeah.
And please let me be a resource to you. I'm, I'm happy to, to speak to any of you about your concerns or about your, your, uh, the things that you need information on. I can be a good resource for you.
Thank you.
Can we, can you give us the date of the circle point one? And I would just like to go back and read.
Yeah.
And I'm having a hard time finding it.
The circle point. That was the circle point millennium. March of 2020 was the PDP amendment. That was, that was the.
Right when we went into COVID.
Right when, and that was, I think that was the first public hearing virtually for a land, land use matter. And, uh, but we had the applicant also bring the ODP to show you what the product was going to look like. They were not quite finished with it, uh, and they did ask for exceptions and council considered those with its approval too.
Okay, great. I'll look, I'll look back.
Can you reroute the email you sent on April 11th? Because I liked the name.
April 11th?
Yeah. You said 4/11.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, uh, info only staff report.
Oh, it's in the staff report.
Or, uh, info only memo. And also before I forget about it, uh, uh, some of you had mentioned the notification radius. We are bringing that study session to you on the sixth. We got the input from, um, the residents that were concerned at the public hearing. We got good input from them and we've incorporated that into the revised recommendation. But also we'd like to hear from you about, uh, how you feel about the 500-foot radius. And do you want to expand that and under what circumstances? So we'd like to discuss that with you as well.
Well, to me, when you have an all-business sector that's doing, now adding residential and there, there won't be anything 500 feet in a lot of cases, then you need to go to where it's obvious there's subdivision, you need to go there.
Yes.
You have a lot of people very angry. Okay, it's 10:26 and we're done.
A corner goes out.